9:33 and we have a quorum of the board present. So the State Board of Education meeting of November 13th, 2018 is called to order. We have a very full agenda today, so I'm going to do my best job at keeping us on time. So I'm going to be the taskmaster for the time today for our agenda. As we've used in the past, we will use Robert's Rule for addressing or asking questions. If you raise your hand, I will then acknowledge you and I'll have a running list and we'll go through the running list to have you have an opportunity to ask your questions or make comments. The first item on the agenda is the approval of agenda and order of priority.
So moved.
So moved, seconded?
Support.
Support. All in favor? Are we going to do discussion? I thought we were going to do discussions.
Right. I'd like to add to our very full agenda.
Okay.
Make it bigger.
Alrighty.
If we could, if I could make the motion to add discussion on future agenda items for December, that would be great.
So I have a motion to add to the agenda, future discussion items, is that correct, Nikki?
Yes.
Okay.
Topic.
Future discussion topics.
Support.
Okay. We have a motion, we have support.
Where would that be?
Would that be under Roman numeral 11, after N would be 0 maybe? Not 0, but 11.
At the end of the agenda, we have item, it would be, I believe it would be O.
O, yes.
So fall under item number 11, and then the next item would be O, and it would be future discussion agenda items. So we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, and then we'll do, no, sorry, discussion, discussion on the items.
So I'd like to somehow bring in Michigan Vaccine Choice, who is discussing data privacy and different things related to FERFA and school reporting on protected health information. So I don't know if we would have that discussion later or at this point in time.
I think at this point in time, we're deciding whether or not to have this item on our agenda.
Okay.
If we decide to add it to the agenda, then we will make a list of topics to add to future agendas.
Okay. Sounds good.
Eileen?
So in our, in our board bylaws, which most people don't consult, I certainly have not as much as I would like to have, there's a, there's a something, yeah, item C, which deals with public comment. It says, "Items identified during the public participation requiring State Board of Education consideration shall be reviewed at the end of the meeting when the board is discussing the agenda for the next meeting. A request may be made to staff to prepare a background document for board consideration at a subsequent meeting." Interestingly, neither of the two committees that we have, that the board has, neither the Legislative Committee nor the Agenda Committee are in our bylaws. We can certainly create committees, and obviously we did, but the, the goal of the bylaws is to make sure that this group is able to discuss as a whole what the public business is for education. That means including public comment, it means any topics that are forwarded to the superintendent in between meetings, anything that we hear, but we are supposed to take a pass at determining whether it's of the content that would impact children appropriately, and then decide together what the priority is for presentation.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing no other discussion, all those in favor of adding this agenda item to future board agendas, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
I'm sorry, I thought this was just for this agenda, it's now for all agendas? What was the, what was your motion?
So it would be further discussion today, and then possibly bringing in a speaker and a group that would discuss it in December.
I thought it was in gen, okay.
I thought, I'm sorry, I thought it was in general as well.
Like how, how they would be added or not added?
Right, that's, that works. I'm new to this.
I just want to know what we're voting on.
Not that we would be adding, not that we would be adding today, just process, I think it, I thought it was process.
So we would discuss further at the end of the agenda today.
So it seems like to me today, we're just putting this item on today's agenda.
To discuss.
Then when we get to that agenda item, then we discuss how we move forward.
Right.
Okay, as well as other items.
Right, it was, right, that was my understanding.
Okay, let me rephrase the motion, to make sure that we're clear on it. The motion is to add to the agenda, item 11O, which be, would be a discussion of future agenda items.
Yes.
Okay? And that would be on all future agendas. Okay?
Maybe, we'll discuss it.
Yeah, that's part of the discussion.
Yeah, that would be part of the discussion.
Okay. Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, we have a new agenda item for today.
It's on the proposed agenda, it still hasn't been voted on.
So now, with our added item, we have the approval of the agenda in order of priority. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Okay, the motion carries, thank you. At this time, Marilyn, will you please introduce members of the State Board of Education?
I'm happy to do so. I'm Marilyn Schneider, I'm the State Board Executive, and to my left is the Chairperson of the Board, she's also the interim State Superintendent, Sheila Alice, and as we go around the table, co-president of the Board, Richard Zilee, and he resides in Dearborn. The Board's other co-president, Cassandra Ulberts, resides in Rochester Hills. The Board's Secretary, Michelle Fecto, resides in Detroit. Nikki Snyder, Board Member, resides in Dexter. This is Laura Chang, this year's Michigan Teacher of the Year from Vicksburg, she's a K- through 5 reading and math interventionist when she's not hanging out with us here at the board table. As we go across, Tyler Sawyer is representing the Governor's Executive Office, and he is the Strategic Advisor for Education and Career Connections. Board Member Eileen Weiser is from Ann Arbor. Lupe Ramos Montini's a Board Member from Grand Rapids. Pamela Pugh's a Board Member from Saginaw. Next to me is the Treasurer of the Board, Tom McMillan, and he's from Oakland Township. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I would like to thank Dr. Zilee and Eileen Weiser, who will be completing their terms as State Board of Education members at the end of December 2018. We want to sincerely thank you for your dedication to the children through our work in the field of education. Your efforts are truly admired and are much appreciated. We will be acknowledging both Eileen and Dr. Z at our December meeting. Last week during the elections, Judy Pritchett and Tiffany Tilly were elected to the State Board of Education. As of January 1st, 2019, they will begin their eight-year term of office on the Board, and we congratulate both of them, and we welcome them to today's meeting. And now we will introduce our new employees, so Vanessa, would you please begin?
Good morning, everybody. We are excited to have three new employees in my division. First is Stephen Reed, sorry, can't see it down there, from the Office of Educational Assessment Accountability. Stephen, can you say hi?
Hi, everyone. My responsibilities are test administration and reporting. I'm working with MMB.
We also have Nicole Mossar, from Office of Educational Assessment Accountability as well.
I'm Nicole Mossar, from the Department of Education. I have Cynthia White-McFall, but I don't see her here. She actually has been at the department for a while, but has taken a new position in the Office of Partnership Districts, so.
Thank you, and Scott?
Good morning, all. We have two new employees that I'd like to introduce this morning. The first is Dr. Inchen Yi. Inchen is an educational research consultant, Level 13, and she's responsible for the Career and Technical Education Student Follow-Up Survey, as well as the Perkins Core Performance Indicators. Dr. Yi has worked for the Department of Health and Human Services before joining MDE, and she has a PhD in Educational Research and Evaluation, and a Master's of Science and Statistics from Virginia Tech in Blacksburg, Virginia, so welcome, Dr. Yi.
Hi, Dr. Yi.
Now, we had another employee who couldn't make it this morning, was supposed to, that is Emily Radawan. Emily is the dorm manager for the Michigan School for the Deaf, and Emily brings a tremendous amount of experience with her. She was a teacher of students with emotional impairment, Saginaw ISD, she was an EI teacher for the Traverse Bay Area ISD as well, and has some teaching experience in the classroom in Anchorage, Alaska. She is a Board Certified Associate Behavior Analyst. If you're familiar with BCBA's, or, the associate BCBA's are very rare to come by, so we're very excited to have Emily join us at the Michigan School for the Deaf.
Thank you, Scott. Are there any other new employees in the audience? Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Dean, I work with the Office of Financial Management. I work on audits coming from the school districts. I have 12 years of experience from the state department. I was auditing the school district.
Thank you very much, and welcome to our new employees. And now we would like the audience to introduce, oh, I'm sorry, oh, so sorry.
Good morning, Paul Dunche, I work for the Program of Education, and I handle all the state's financial due process. I'm the Director of Special Education Program Finance. Background in public accounting, I am aware of corporate and individual, also, my responsibilities are for the grant funded initiative.
Thank you very much, and again, welcome to our new employees. And we will have the audience introduce themselves, starting with Marty, please.
Good morning, I'm Marty Ackley, I'm the Director of the Office of Public and Government Affairs, here with the Department of Education.
Good morning, I'm Lois Lofton, Donovan.
Good morning, I'm Jessica Martinez, with the Michigan Association of Secondary School Principals.
Good morning, Wendy Zadup, with the Michigan Association of Secondary School.
Good morning, Dave Carey, with MISA.
Good morning, Tiffany Tilly.
Karen Slonger, Calhoun ISD.
I'm Richa, State Department of Education. Oh. I can stand up.
In the back?
Thank you, in the front?
Waffle, Calhoun ISD.
I'm the Director of Instruction, Wayland Union Schools.
Cheryl Wilson, Instructional.
I'm Michelle Reibert, Michigan Department of Education.
I'm John White, Superintendent Marysville.
I'm Licon, Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction.
I'm Public Policy Associate.
Moving, moving up to the side.
Disclaimer with Don Warren Service.
I'm Ashley Shelton, interim Assistant Director.
Ross Fort, Special Assistant to Deputy Superintendent Calhoun.
I'm Kenneth Snix, Deputy Superintendent for P-20 Systems and Student Transitions.
I'm Keith Clark, Deputy Superintendent for the Division of Student Transitions.
Our Calhoun, the Office of the Superintendent.
Brian Hiles, State Director for Current Technical Education, Department of Education.
Okay, did we get everyone? One more? Alright, thank you, everyone, for being here, and again, welcome. If you are planning to address the Board during today's meeting, please complete a form and get it to Marilyn. Forms are available on the table just outside of the boardroom, and they must be submitted prior to the beginning of the meeting that is devoted to public comment. Public comment will begin immediately following the lunch break, scheduled at approximately 1:00 PM today. Please be here at that time to make sure that you have an opportunity to have your comments heard. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, the first item of the committee of the whole is a presentation on #GoOpenMichigan. #GoOpenMichigan is an initiative to advance the use of high-quality, standards-aligned, openly licensed educational resources, also known as OER. This morning's presentation highlights Michigan's innovative and collaborative approach to OER. This presentation is an information item only and does not require any action on the part of the Board. Our presenters this morning are Michelle Reibert, Vanessa Heasler, Anne Marie Mapes, as well as #GoOpenMichigan microsite founders, and #GoOpenMichigan districts of Marysville and Wayland Union. Welcome and good morning.
Good morning, Board, thank you, Superintendent Alice, and we are just going to dive right in today, we have a lot to cover, and a lot of guests with us, and we want to make sure we spend our time on that, so. Sean and Anne Marie.
I would just like to remind everybody that in February of 2017, then Superintendent Wiston signed Michigan on as one of the Go Open states in the nation, and what that means is that we promised to start the ball rolling for development of a platform and the recruitment of districts to consider transitioning to high-quality digital content in support of their local curriculum. And so today, we'd like to just provide an update of the work to date, and I will let Anne Marie Mapes, our manager from our ed tech unit, continue.
Thanks, Michelle. So as you see from that quote up there, from the top 10 and 10, we, we think that this is very connected to the work that we're doing with OER, the equity piece, that, that students and teachers alike should have access to resources no matter where they live in Michigan. And so as Michelle mentioned, we signed on to this Go Open initiative, that's a USDOE campaign calling on states and districts to adopt and implement the use of openly licensed educational resources. So of course, we tie everything that we do back to the top 10 and 10, as you'll see there on the screen, our, our initiative is very much aligned to the 10 and 10, and all the four focus areas, and we feel that this is one of the, the best examples at the Department of a strategy partnerships, and, and the partnerships that we have with our districts, as Vanessa also mentioned. We also are connected with systemic infrastructure and the repository that we've developed, and connected to learner-centered supports, as these instructional materials allow us to really personalize, personalize learning for our students. And then lastly, an effective education workforce, these are instructional materials that are high-quality, that are going to be assisting teachers, and really helping remove a lot of time that they would spend on searching for supplemental materials, as well as other resources.
And I think you'll hear from some of our teachers that are here today, the value of having ready access to high-quality digital content.
So what are openly licensed educational resources? As you see up on the screen, there's like this continuum of proprietary to free to OER, and so proprietary textbooks, you know, those are, those are commercially published that are copyrighted, and, and even in my classroom, if I were to take even just like a, an excerpt, I would not be able to translate that into another language for my students, because that is copyrighted. The copyright does not afford me that opportunity. With free learning resources, like the things that we have available from PBS and Smithsonian, those are still copyright restricted, although they are free, so districts don't have to spend extra money on those. But then we have our OER, and what those are, is, we always say that they're kind of free like a puppy, so puppies are free, but you have to take care of them, feed them, take them to the vet. So they're not necessarily free, we need to pay and contribute to the creation of them, but the open license allows us this opportunity to remix, revise, and, and just update the materials that we're using. So a prime example of that is the Michigan Open Book Project, and one of our partners here today, and one of our funders, you'll hear a little bit more about that from him. So again, the characteristics of OER, the real power there is that you can reuse these, you can revise them, you can remix them, and then redistribute. So our districts are going to share a lot more what that looks like in the classroom, but just know that that's the real power, is that you can revise and remix for your own classroom context. And so when we talk about the power of OER, it allows for us to really contextualize the learning experience for our students and our communities in Michigan. It allows for teachers to have more freedom in designing these learning experiences, and it also harnesses their professional expertise, and them as subject matter experts. And so we also know that we can then divert savings into teaching and learning, and maybe spend things, rather than buying a new, a new set of textbooks, maybe we can invest a little bit more in some teacher professional learning or teacher time to create or curate resources. So as we mentioned earlier, we have a lot of strategic partners, and some of which are in the room today, which you'll hear from, some are not, we can, we, and some, some are not going to share with you today, but, but I'd like to have a shout out for Chelsea Martinez from MASSP, who helped us with our logo, and who also sits on this, this strategy team. So as you see, we have over, over 15 different organizations represented here, and we have also 30 different partners that are on the strategic team, from K-12 and beyond. We launched a microsite back in June to house all of Michigan's instructional materials, and so we have, from June to today, we have almost 900 registered users on the site, you can go in and look at the website without even having a registered account. We also have curated collections available on the site, and our strategy team has looked at these collections and developed them, so that we know that we can go here for high-quality resources that are aligned to Michigan's standards, and you see there just a few of those curated collections on our site. So I'd like to turn it over to some of our contributors, and I'd like to call up to the table first, Dave Prendle, who is a past president of McCall, the Michigan Association for Computer Users and Learning. He is a classroom teacher from Byron Public Schools.
Thank you. McCall is dedicated to providing resources for our 26,000 members across the state and the country, and we have members across the world. Majority of these members are classroom teachers that want and need free and accessible resources. They also create their own resources, and they need a place to share those out, and the Go Open initiative does support this for us. And McCall, the Michigan Association Computer Users and Learning, fully supports this initiative financially and with personnel on the team, the strategic team.
Thank you, thanks, Dave. I'd like to invite up to the table Dave Carey, who is the Michigan Collaboration Hub Director, also a contributor to the funding of the site, and this could not have been possible without the contributions of our strategic partners.
Good morning. Just wanted to share a huge thank you for the continued partnership with everybody involved in this, but particularly the Department. Through a lot of years, we have partnered in the OER space, and ultimately, when I think about results, because that's what really matters, we turned a small collaborative project into over 600,000 downloads of social studies resources for Michigan students. And they're open, they're available, and they're making a difference in achievement. So just a thank you for your continued partnership, and looking forward to the continued work on the OER site.
Thanks, Dave. Up next is Stacy Shu from Michigan Virtual, who is the Professional Learning Services Manager there.
Good morning, everyone. So a key reason we committed both fiscal and in-kind support is because we at Michigan Virtual see part of our mission as dedicated to ensuring equitable access to professional learning experiences, resources, and support at scale throughout the state, and we believe our support of this initiative aligns with the MDE's top 10 and 10, ensuring that all teachers have access to equitable opportunities across the state, no matter where they live or where they teach. As a former elementary teacher myself, I can tell you that in the classroom, I taught social studies, and I worked with a book that ended during the Carter Administration, and I can tell you I did not teach that long ago. So for me, this is personal, in the way that I truly feel this will have an impact on education, and not only our educators, but also our students. And I'm very grateful to everyone at this table for making this initiative something that is valued and is of importance, and I look forward to continued work on this project. So thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. And finally, we have Melinda Waffle, who is the Regional Educational Media Centers of Michigan, the RMC Association. She is an educational technology consultant for Calhoun ISD and RMC 12 East Director.
Thank you, and good morning. I'm here representing RMC. My journey with OER began over five years ago, when I attended a conference in Minnesota, where at Minnesota University, they have a commitment to making all their materials OER, so my excitement in seeing our state pursue this at the K-12 level was, was extremely, I'm extremely excited about it, and I'm very thankful that RMC asked me to represent them, and also that my organization, Calhoun ISD, has supported me in this work. This fits with RMC's vision about equitable resources for all students and for all teachers, and also the sharing that we believe in, that collaboration, we are just all better teachers. So this project has been one that we have endorsed, and we will continue to endorse as we develop additional professional learning opportunities around it, that will be freely offered for all of our educators across the state. That's how passionate we are about it. So thank you today for letting us, letting us share.
Thank you, Melinda. And next, we'd like to hear a little bit from our Go Open districts, and so I'd like to invite Marysville Public Schools to the table, Dr. Sean Whiteman, Superintendent, Kim Licon, Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and Denise Gellmore, teacher.
Thanks, Anne Marie. Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I'm going to talk a little bit about Marysville Public Schools and our journey a little bit. A few years back, we were fortunate to pass a bond in our community, and we did a massive upgrade in the district with regards to making sure we have Wi-Fi in all of our schools. We went one-to-one on iPads through K-8, and we decided to go with Chromebooks with our 9th through 12th grade students, because we want to make sure that they have the skills to keyboard and so on, going on and transitioning into their careers, or whatever college they choose to go into. We had smart boards also put in every classroom for the interactive display use for it during the instructional practices, and in 2015, I received an email from Michigan Department of Education inviting staff members to take in a special social studies project, my Open Book Project, and I sent an email out to our, our staff members, and Denise Gellmore, you hear from her, she's one of our teachers in the district, chose to be a part of the actual project, and it's, it was, it's been an amazing experience in using those books also in our schools. We're a launch district here in the state of Michigan, I was fortunate to meet some people through the University of Southern California, and also through Coachella School District, Dr. Daryl Adams, who was a, a launch district in California, and he talked to me about some of the things at this particular conference I was in, and it was something that I was interested in after talking to him. So coming back and talking to the Michigan Department of Education and Anne Marie, we decided to, to jump in and be a part of the Michigan team.
I'm Denise Gellmore, and I would like to just talk to you a little bit about what it looks like, 27 years in education, and when I first went on board, had the opportunity, thanks to our superintendent and our school district's support, to be part of a, writing a textbook, because as someone just mentioned, we know that so many textbooks, I think our president ends with, our latest with Ronald Reagan, so we needed resources, and I've been, that's one of my passion subjects to teach, and I really had no idea what this OER journey was to begin with, except that I was so fortunate to be in a room of quality educators from all over the state of Michigan represented. We went to Shepherd, Michigan, and we started writing the content for the Go Open. I heard how many downloads, it's exciting, but this is what it looks like in the classroom. I see personalized, individualized, engaged students, I see the multiple learning styles that were so hard to address with the one-on-one book, I see the communication, the collaboration, again, the technology that we're fortunate to have, but you don't have to be a one-on-one district to use these sources, and I see my students excited, I see them engaged in learning in such a, a way that I can bring to them through this digital means, and for someone, I've always said, if I- And for someone, I've always said, if I can do it, anybody can do it, because I think that it's just an exciting, and I know what's good for students. So that's been my OER experience, year four of using this digital textbook.
Well, I just want to touch base on where we're at currently right now. We've embraced the open resource movement here in our district and around the state. Right now, currently, we're using Eureka Math as our math program, K-8. We're seeing a lot of tremendous success with that particular program. We're also piloting Yale Education in grades four through eight. We're providing right now, currently, job embedded professional development support. And the thing that I want to say and emphasize to everybody here is these resources are free. We're providing a viable Tier One curriculum that's aligned to Common Core State standards, and our teachers have the operational flexibility to change those resources to meet the needs of their students in the classroom, which is a true definition of what's differentiated learning and what we need to do with our kids instructionally and also with the academics. A couple other things I want to touch base as well is, you know, the Dell Trailblazer, we ended up having some professional development, I had mentioned earlier, through Dell, it was free, it was an open resource, that has also been able to teach our teachers how to use technology in the classroom with students, which has been a tremendous benefit. We're currently, again, one-to-one in iPads, K-2. We decided as a district to go one-to-one in Chromebooks in grades three through 12 because of the keyboarding and the 21st century skills that students need upon graduation. And we're proud of being, and actually, an ambassador district here in the state of Michigan.
And so with...
One of the benefits, or there's many benefits, and I am also so grateful for the MDE when we were invited to attend the initial Go Open committee meetings, and to want the input from the classroom and the school districts, and to be at a table with so many stakeholders. And the collaboration with the RMCs and the McCall's has just been so, really, a wonderful experience, and restoring the passion. And I think the one thing that I know, that I have felt in other teachers like me and other people that are using these, it really does put the teacher back in the driver's seat, the content expert, and allows us to be flexible. And we all know districts face the financial burdens, and some of the textbook expenses, again, it's not necessarily that they're not, we're taking and redistributing those funds, and it's just been a journey that we've been able to travel throughout the state on this past summer, and even in different places around the country, and know that this OER movement is really transforming. So I'm very, very thankful and grateful for this experience.
So as we look at the resources that we've been utilizing, you know, what is the impact on student achievement? So the scores that we have up there are MSTEP results. Marysville Public Schools is the blue or the dark purple color. So as you can see, we're above state and county averages in our math and social studies on last year's MSTEP scores as well. So it's great to see that our kids are achieving higher than surrounding schools in our area with the use of the open resources.
Thank you so much, Marysville Public Schools. And now I'd like to take the time to invite up to the table Wayland Public Schools. Wayland Union, Teresa Folk, Director of Instruction, and Cheryl Wilson, Instructional Technology Teacher Consultant.
Good morning. Similar to Marysville, we are a one-to-one district. We introduced iPads in our district seven years ago in grade seven through 12. Now we're one-to-one K-12, working on, of course, universal Wi-Fi. When we set out to start our one-to-one initiative, we had several goals in mind. Personalized education was one of them, working on communication with our teachers, between teachers and students and between students and students, improving efficiency in classrooms, not having to have kids wait two, three, four weeks to get into a computer lab to do assignments, and then, of course, career readiness. And we all know that they're going to need to be tech-ready when they enter the career workforce. Our high school teachers wanted to purchase MacBooks so that they could create textbooks instead of purchasing textbooks. So when Michelle Ribant came to visit our district, she saw some of that work, and then also some of the work of our social studies team, who was working to revise some resources that they had and embed sound clips of the teachers reading out loud the text that the students would be reading. So students who had an IEP who need text read aloud could hear it in their teacher's voice instead of a robotic voice. So Michelle saw that work and then invited us to join the Michigan Go Open team, and it's been a great journey ever since.
And just to give you a little snapshot, if you look at the slide up there, this is an example from our geometry in the high school. And instead of the students just opening up a standard textbook for a unit, they're offered a menu, and they get voice and choice by basically selecting different activities. And I bring this up because the activities on there, some of them use OER resources. Basically, they're open. There are other things on here that are free, so basically accessible, but they're still copyrighted. And then also, the teachers still use some of the copyrighted materials. So they're doing a blend, they're kind of mixing and matching things that work for their students and for their curriculum. It's allowed for a lot more personalization of the classroom, and the students really like it. You're going to start to hear things like, "I've been able to work ahead and choose what I can do," and then students saying, "I'm just not there yet," as opposed to, "The teacher didn't teach that yet." We're working right now and continuing, even having students creating the OER. You're going to notice a little example there of dilation. The student made an example on an iPad of a dilation, and then also, they're making like videos that are talking about triangle relationships. So we're starting to expand that on out into the student realm as well. Currently in Wayland, we are using the My Open textbooks. We are using it in most of the grade levels. We're also working on modifying, you're going to notice a little picture up there on the right-hand corner. This is the second grade where you're going to notice clearly in there, Wayland, we can get in and modify the books as well and start to personalize it and make it for Wayland students. And we're working on that this year to do that. We're working, we're using the MyStar units for middle school science. We're piloting the Phenomenal Science in K-5. In the middle school social studies, as well as using the My Open textbooks, they are using the PA SST assessments and Giants. In middle school math, we've worked with the Open Up Resources and are loving the math right now. We also have teachers that are creating their own textbooks, currently working in sociology and dance. We are gradually sharing the Michigan repository. We want to make sure teachers are comfortable, so we're preparing them gradually and teaching them about it. We use CK-12 in some areas. And then we're also with educators in our district offering stipends if they would like to work on it during the school year or in the summer. So we're helping to support our teachers and help them in the process and not just taking the money and funnel it somewhere else, we're funneling it back into the educators.
So some of the benefits that we've seen of working with the Go Open Michigan Strategy Team is just really learning how things work at the state level. Sometimes at the local district, you don't know or realize what's going on every day at the state level, and it's been great to have those relationships and build those bridges. Networking with people from all branches of education, working with people from McCall and RMC and all of the different partnerships that you saw on the screen a while ago, learning more about OER every day ourselves, and then watching OER gain momentum in Michigan, kind of watching the process of Michigan just enter this process to become a leader in this initiative, it's been great. So just like Marysville, we're seeing some great things with our student achievement data. Wayland Union Schools historically has struggled to even get to state average for MSTEP. This is the first year we surpassed state average in every grade level, every content area on the MSTEP assessment. So just very excited about that. And then some very nice, specific jumps in social studies where we've really been investing a lot of time with OER. The return on investing the time using high-quality resources directly aligned to the standards has been great. Content information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, that, thank you to all of our presenters who came to share with you and to share their excitement. I think it's really great. I love working with this group because of the excitement you heard from everybody who's involved with it. There's a lot of things in education that maybe don't feel as exciting to everybody, and this is something where the people driving the effort believe in the effort very much. I was struck by, I think this is important, sometimes I feel like when we talk about technology in education, it's oppositional. It's like, it's either technology or teachers. And I think this shows us, this is optimal. It's teachers using technology towards instructional improvement, toward that kind of engaging, exciting experience we want our kids to have. And this is how we see technology and teachers working together to improve outcomes for all Michigan students. Superintendent Alice?
Okay. Thank you very much. We will open it up now to questions or comments from board members. I'll start with Nikki and then Laura.
Just on that note, I heard one of the groups say that, you know, there are students that are working ahead, because that's where they're at, working at their own pace, and then there are students that aren't there yet, not because the teacher hasn't taught it yet. So how do they work together for those students that aren't there yet? Is there a plan? Do they engage more? How does that look in the classroom?
We could say that within the OERs, there's a lot of opportunity to personalize, and you can actually, in the student information systems, set up personal pathways where teachers select resources that are appropriate to where the student is in his or her learning. And so, and there are also students now starting to self-identify. I do better when I can hear it. So they'll do text-to-voice, or they'll do videos. And I think the geometry session from Wayland really shows that menu, all of those resources are highly differentiated for individual students. And that's really where you can meet them where they are with the appropriate resource that they can respond to and move them forward academically.
And I think too, you heard, I think it was the Wayland presentation, them talk about high-quality Tier One instruction. So again, the technology doesn't do all of it, but it helps within a good multi-tiered system of support. You have high-quality Tier One instruction for all students, and then you have differentiated supports for students with additional needs. So that helps facilitate that. You need more on this topic, you need less on this topic, but it happens within a larger system that is not fully about the OER, it's about a good multi-tiered system of support, which is another key initiative that the MDE is working with all of our partners on. Not initiative, it's an approach to instructional improvement.
Thank you. I have then Laura, Dr. Z, and Eileen.
As a classroom teacher, I've used the Go Open social studies materials, and I just want to say they're engaging and they're relevant, that the kids love the interaction with these materials. So thank you, from a classroom teacher and from our entire district of teachers who use those social studies materials. It was a gift, put in our lap for free, and we're really excited about these.
Thank you.
Dr. Z?
Would you comment on how the platform or the specific equipment you have limits or influences what's available and how it can be used?
So we have two kind of sections of the repository. We showed a screenshot of the curated collections, but we also have the opportunity for teachers to go in and upload any material or any resources that they are creating themselves as well. So we're working with partners to establish these curated collections that we know that these resources have been vetted, that they are high-quality, but then we also allow for anybody to go on there and upload a lesson or a unit or even an assessment that they might have that they feel that they want to share out after it's been developed.
And as for the platform, if it's specific for iOS or PCs, it'll say that right on the resource. Most can be transferred between either, and in the case of My Open Books, they actually make a finite, you can download it for iOS, you can download it for PCs. So there are, we do know and understand interoperability, so we really have designated that right on the site.
Well, this has made my heart sing as I end my second term of office, but at the heart of all education are children and the educators who are communicating with them. And not very often, in the last 30 or 40 years that I've looked at, has there been a chance to communicate and teach children so well with the way that kids are learning now and living now. So this is extremely exciting for me, and I think that we just have to always be careful to separate out the technology from the humans, from the quality of what's being communicated and taught. And if we keep that path squared, I'm hearing educators singing in the classroom from your presenters, and that's a thrill for me. Thank you so much for this presentation, for the work that you're doing.
Thank you. And Pam? And then to Lupe.
So thank you, and thank you for this opportunity to hear about how innovation is integrated with educators. And just wanting, I'm looking at the, was it, it was Wayland, and you've also talked about it a little bit, about how the modifying of the Michigan Open textbooks. And how is that vetted? I mean, what does that modifying look like?
So we can make any kind of changes. So the example that we showed was the second grade textbook. So second grade social studies talks about communities. Well, we were finding in our traditional textbooks, our students really couldn't connect with the concept of a community because the pictures they were seeing were not communities that they were used to. So we can change these pictures to make it something that the kids recognize, and then push it back out and share it back out. And then other districts can follow that same lead too, once they see it in our books. They can change it to Grand Rapids, or Rochester, or whatever other community makes sense for them. And the whole concept of OER is for, to share and share alike, so other resources, other teachers can build and improve on those resources and share them back out.
So that sounds really exciting, and I'm wondering, I mean, is there a way that you have to vet that material and make sure that it's something that, I hate to use the word appropriate, but you know, that's not controversial?
One of the big tasks that the Go Open team has worked on are vetting rubrics to make sure that anything that's added to that Michigan microsite is vetted and high-quality and aligned to the standards. One of the challenges of OER is that there is so much out there, and so as a classroom teacher, to sit down, it's very overwhelming. By going to that Michigan microsite and being able to share that as a resource with our teachers, our teachers can go there and know that what's there has already been vetted with these rubrics and know that it's high-quality.
And so the term used earlier in the presentation, this is one that it took me a while to pick up on, because this isn't my core, I don't live this every day, but curated collections. That's this idea of, there is some vetting, there is rubrics, there is some approval, but there is openness to this.
That's good.
And so in the example in Wayland, I imagine when you guys decided, that the decision to modify the pictures in there came out of your instructional work, discussions as an instructional, you know, embedded in their district. So it's a very, there is a localness to it that I think we want to preserve. We want that flexibility for local communities to modify as they need to without so much centralization, but then have that curation and that stamp of, many eyes have looked at this and feel it meets standards, it's appropriate. So it's a, it's a both and. There is some, there's less control, but there's also more flexibility to tailor. And then again, that's why, to Eileen's point about this being embedded around children and the educators in the system, that without that human element, that's important, that the locals have that opportunity.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to go to Lupe. I have Tom, then back to Eileen and back to Nikki.
Okay. Social studies was my subject. I taught social studies for, I don't know how many years, I'm going to say 15. And I wish that these resources had been part of my repertoire of instructional gimmicks that I could use. It sounds exciting. I'm glad that we had actual testimony from schools that are using, that's very connecting, and we understand it even better. Now, I want to ask Maryville, where in the map is Maryville?
Lakeview County, right on the bump.
Over here.
You were right.
Are you close to Caseville?
What was that?
Caseville?
South of Caseville.
Okay. I'll tell you a story about Caseville. Anyway, so congratulations. Now, did you say that Brian had something to do with the creation of this program? So that makes it even more personal and powerful for me. So I thank you, and I thank all the school districts that are using this. Now, how many school districts are involved with this project?
At some level, hundreds, because we have teachers that are going on and just downloading materials to integrate as sort of an extra on top of their adopted curriculum. And then we also have schools that have, like our ambassador districts, that have adopted whole content areas K-12, and there's sort of every shade of gray in between. So hundreds of districts are using the site, some extensively and some only to spice up their existing curriculums.
And the, I just want to, this slide with all these partner logos, the reach of these organizations is amazing. They're all over the state, they're in all different parts of districts, so you know, sometimes there's a lot of actors in districts at all different levels. But these organizations partnered together and with us means the reach is pretty extensive. So it's hard to quantify exactly how many, partly because of how amazing these partners are about getting out to their networks and their communities and reinforcing with the same message.
And then Tom?
Regarding data, student data privacy, how are parents alerted to what data might be collected? How can they opt out, their children? How can they opt out their children from that collection? How is that dealt with? And also, I find it, I still find it curious that in Silicon Valley, who are responsible for all the technology, a big move is to make sure schools don't have computers in Silicon Valley because they say, kids have them all the time anyway, so they don't need them when they're at school. But that's just an observation. But I'm more, I'm interested in the data privacy.
So the site does not have any access to individual student at all. And so following the normal curriculum adoption process, districts, like the districts here, take these resources through their formal board adoption process for curriculum support. And so if they adopt my Open Books for Social Studies, that goes to their local school board for approval of curriculum resources as a textbook would. So there's no difference in the local board approval for curriculum support resources.
There's no third-party interaction? It's all, there's no vendors, no nothing like that?
Correct. It's an open educational resource site that teachers and local districts can access freely. And then they would vet and adopt their resources just as they would a traditional textbook.
And I guess, back to what Pam was saying, there is some filtering that goes on then as far as what is available. And I guess, I wonder who, you know, who, what the political perspective of those doing the filtering is. I mean, how do you, I would almost say, how do you make sure there isn't any, but there always is with anybody, and there's a bias? So I just wonder how that is, is it, is that open so that everybody can see what was rejected and maybe what was not, so that people can kind of see?
Yes. I mean, I think it's important to, you are right that it is hard to separate review of content from politics in some sense. But it is actually incredibly important that we do. And so when we think about reviewing content, we think about alignment to standards, we think about, but that's really the big thing, alignment to standards. Not, do I agree with this resource or not agree with this resource? So I think we need to really continue to work together to strive to de-politicize review of content on all sides so that we can make sure kids have access to high-quality content and the importance of critical thinking about that content. You know, you can get into a really interesting space that's close to propaganda on either side, if you're not all committed, which we are, to high-quality resources aligned to standards, and then good instructional delivery that focuses on kids interacting with material critically. We have to educate thinkers, and that's what's important.
Thank you. Eileen?
I just wanted to point out briefly, when I re-handed the board eight years ago, I remember a major discussion as the department was consolidating with the Library of Michigan, which was totally unable to curate any websites or any information, just because it's a very specialized area. It's not a librarian function, it's an educator function, and trying to find a way to come together was impossible. And I also want to point out that the Institute for Education Service, in conjunction with the U.S. Department of Education, has something called What Works Clearinghouse. But that resource is a, it's an overarching theme. So you would have to spend so much time researching it as a state or as an individual district, that it'd be a long time before you could apply it in your schools. This is what we always hope for, which is an effort by educators to take the best standards available, express them well to students, and find a way to make every child, make it possible for every child to connect. So again, look how far we've come, and look how different it looks now to be successful in the classroom than the resources that were available eight years ago.
I have Nikki, and then Michelle. And then if there aren't any other ones, we'll wrap this up.
So just from the perspective of being a parent, is my other thought process in this area. So your kids bring home textbooks, and you're able to open them with them and go through it with them, or discuss a test with them, whatever. There's assignments. Do parents still have access to the textbooks that their kids are reading from in this type of system?
You want to hear from the districts, maybe? That might be a good one.
Yep.
So we're one-to-one in grade 712 right now, and the devices go home with the kids, so it's no different than a traditional textbook in that the student can set their iPad on the counter and go through the resources, just like anything else. You don't have to be on the internet, so internet connectivity is not an issue. Aside from that, there, all of these things are open and available on the internet. We just have to direct the parent to the links to be able to download and access.
So it can be downloaded?
Yes.
Can it only be downloaded on the school device?
No.
Okay. So there's other, you could download it at home?
Correct.
And your child could not bring it, bring that iPad? I've said this at the table before. I'm like, my oldest could totally handle a device, and he would take care of it. My middle child would, I mean, she was just learning how to not rip pages out of books in kindergarten, let alone take care of an iPad. So just, there's just some thought there too.
And it doesn't have to be just digital. I mean, there are a lot of resources. We can still physically print out a copy for kids that need it. And that's, I mean, it's very flexible.
Thank you. And then Michelle.
Quick comment. This sounds wonderful, and the idea of having it be affordable and good information out to people. My concern is equity, and that some districts are just not going to have the resources to be able to access this. And they have such high turnover that they leave with the computers, you know, and the school doesn't have the money to replace them, or there's upgrades to maintain, you know, the devices and things like that. So my only, in that there'll be more of a gap based on income and resources in certain communities. So I don't know if that's something that is being aggressively looked at, and you know, solutions focusing on those types of issues, but hopefully we can overcome that.
Yeah, I think, and the team can pitch in if they would like to. I think like, one of our first slides talks about, OER themselves are free and open. And so it actually helps with the equity issue because it's textbook, curriculum adoption is very costly for districts, and we do see that. We see partnership districts without updated curriculum because they can't buy new textbooks. And that, so that isn't an equity issue. So the actual resources is targeting that. You're talking about the technology then to use some of the resources. But like Wayland just said, they don't, you don't have to have it one-on-one to use the resources. Would that, is that helpful to kids if that's where a district decides to go? I mean, the two districts we have have gone to one, a lot of our districts have worked toward one-on-one. But it does help at least with the content and the access to high-quality instructional materials. Where there, it's not as necessary that everybody have a computer. The materials, the instructional tools are still there. So I think we need, it's, this helps with the equity about access to good curricular materials. We need to keep working on equity to all sorts of resources and supports for a lot of our districts.
Thank you. And thank you to the MDE staff for coordinating today's presentation. Also, thank you to our microsite funders for presenting today, and the staff from Marysville and from Wayland. We appreciate you sharing your experiences with us today. Thank you very much.
And I want to note, the team didn't amaze, they did 40 minutes exactly with all these presenters, so hats off to them as well.
Great job. Thank you. The next item on the committee of the whole agenda is a presentation on competency-based education. Our speaker today is Peter Green, who is a retired teacher and author, and he is here to present on competency-based education. This is an information item only, does not require any action on the part of the board. And Mr. Green, welcome to the Michigan State Board of Education meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning to everybody, and thank you for the opportunity to make the drive to Lansing from Western Pennsylvania. It wasn't cold and snowy enough back home, so I appreciate being here. Just a little bit about who I am. I was a classroom teacher for 39 years, high school English, grade seven through 12. I taught primarily in a small town, my hometown Franklin, Pennsylvania, which is about halfway between Pittsburgh and Erie. I retired in June of this year, and now I'm a stay-at-home dad with two 17-month-old twins. About 10 years ago, I became interested and involved in what was going on in education. I started to educate myself, started writing, started blogging. And at this point, in addition to my own writing, you'll find me on the Forbes website, you'll find me on the Progressive website, and occasionally I pop up in the Washington Post. So that kind of exposure has, in turn, brought me in contact with a lot of people around the country who have a lot of concerns about different educational issues. I talk to them, they contact me. So I've gathered a lot of information about what's going on with several ed reform topics, including competency-based education. However, I'm a retired teacher. I'm perhaps the only person who's going to come talk to you about this, whose upcoming paychecks do not depend on what you decide one way or another. And I apologize in advance if some of the information I give you is information you already have. I'm sure that many of you have also educated yourselves. But what I'm going to give you is a particular perspective from my point of view and from what I've collected about this. First thing to understand about competency-based education is that it is not new. And the old days, it was called mastery learning. Mastery learning goes all the way back to the 1920s. It was popularized in education in a bigger way in the late 60s, and the idea then as now was fairly simple. The fundamental idea is fairly simple. All students can achieve high levels of learning, given enough time. In the 90s, it was renamed outcome-based education. That initiative failed for several different reasons. In Pennsylvania, we were kind of ground zero for both the presenting of outcome-based education and the end of it. I, like many teachers, had gone to maybe a half dozen trainings for how we were going to make this big transition, and then suddenly, we weren't anymore. Both of those movements left some marks on education and on teacher practices, but as total movements, they were never completely successful. Current iteration, competency-based education, sometimes called proficiency-based learning, is also having problems. The basic idea is simple enough. In traditional education, we get the student for a set amount of time, we teach them as much as we can in that time period, and then we evaluate how much we've taught them, and we decide whether it's enough to move them on or not. The time is the fixed quantity, and the amount of learning is the variable. CBE simply proposes that we flip that, that we have the amount of learning be the fixed quantity and let time be the variable. That speaks to a tension that has always been in education. We've always wanted to teach students a certain amount of stuff, but we've always only had a certain amount of time to teach it to them. And the larger principle, the idea of flipping it, makes a certain amount of sense. But as with many big movements to change education, we start to run into problems when we get into the specifics. And let me just run through some of the pressure points or problem points that we run into trying to implement competency-based education. We have to set proficiencies. In other words, we need a list of things the student should be able to do when they graduate. Nowadays, districts are inclined to start with Common Core because it's a handy list of standards that's already there. Your state is still calling it Common Core. In Pennsylvania, we're one of the states that threw Common Core out by erasing the words "Common Core" from all our standards and grinding in Pennsylvania state standards instead. But it's still the same thing. Problem with using Common Core as a foundation is that it really only covers math and reading. And in the case of reading, it doesn't actually cover content. So if your idea of what a student should know when they graduate from high school includes a list of certain works of literature, Common Core is not going to provide that for you. And of course, in other areas, Common Core is not going to provide you any standards at all. You also have to decide with this list of proficiencies, how much you want to break them down into micro proficiency. Let's say that you want every student who graduates from your high school to be able to play "My Wild Irish Rose" on the trombone. So you can just go straight to that, hand them a trombone, and say, learn to play "My Wild Irish Rose." We're going to check, see when you provision on that. Or you can break it down into smaller proficiencies. You can say, well, first, we want you to learn how to put together a trombone. We want you to learn to play a bunch of different scales. We want you to learn particular notes. We want you to learn time signatures. And we can break "My Wild Irish Rose" down into different phrases, and we can break it down into all these little bits. That turns out to be a really difficult and complicated task, because when you get into fairly complex activities, how do you break them down into smaller pieces? And if you break them down into smaller pieces, is there any guarantee that the student who can do all of the smaller pieces can do the larger proficiency you're after? That whole business turns out to be a big challenge on its own. You have to set sequence. Part of the idea of competency-based education in its pure form is that the student doesn't go on to B until they've done A, and then until they've finished B, they don't go on to C. And you'll notice that when we talk about competency-based education, we frequently talk, we frequently use math as an example. Because math is a subject that lends itself, seems to lend itself well to sequencing. I was an English teacher, so I can't make arguments for or against that with any degree of authority. But in other subjects, setting a sequence is not so obvious. If you're of a certain age, you may have come up through school learning that first you have to learn to write a sentence, and you can't write paragraphs until you write sentences. And then once you write paragraphs, then you can write essays, but you have to do things in that order. Since then, we've figured out that that's not really true. And in fact, in some approaches to English now, we do the exact opposite. We have students write entire essays, free-write, and then we start working on the nuts and bolts and the specifics of. So how do you want to sequence that in a competency-based education setting? How are you going to put things in order? And you have to think hard about this because you're saying that your student can't progress to this task until they've completed this one. So this one had better be critical. This has always been a challenge in any kind of class. And this is where we've made compromises in the traditional setup. In a traditional classroom, very often as teachers, we say, okay, Chris has done the best he can with this stuff, but we've got to move on. And that's a criticism of the traditional setup, that when we move Chris on too many times, when he's only, or she's only sort of gotten the material, then that deficit increases with time. But sometimes, it's not an issue at all. When I took physics in high school, I could not grasp potential difference to save my life. So my teacher threw up his hands, and we moved on, and for the rest of the year, I was fine. If I'd had to stop at that one unit, then I would have missed a half a year of physics. And we also have to consider, when we talk about CBE, we often talk in terms of a high school setting. With an elementary setting, we've got a whole different set of factors in play. How much frustration can Chris, when Chris is seven years old, take being stuck at one particular unit before Chris is allowed to move on? You have to choose tasks. You have to decide what task the student is going to do to prove proficiency. And what we're seeing across the country is that there's a very wide range of options being chosen here. All of them have their own particular drawbacks. At one end of the scale, we have standardized tasks. In other words, all the students complete certain standardized tasks in order to show proficiency. At the other end of the scale, we have teacher-created tasks, where the teachers create all the tasks that the students do to create proficiency. Very often, and I think this is the case in your state, but you would know better than I, CBE is teamed up with performance-related assessment, where we give them performance tasks to do, and that's a measure of whether they've reached proficiency or not. Challenge here is that you need many tasks. You could have your students analyze fast-food business patterns in your community, and it could be a really good performance task this year. Next year, can you use it again? Not really. Because next year, students will just ask last year's students what they did and how to do it, and you're now assessing students' ability to share information socially, but you're not getting the same kind of clean assessment of proficiency that you got the first time you used the task. So you find that you need a huge library, an ever-renewing library of performance tasks in order for the students to be measured on proficiency. And what we're seeing in many schools and places where they've adopted CBE, parents become increasingly frustrated with the fact that, well, my kid performed, my kid proved proficiency by doing this thing, but your kid only had to do that thing. And last year, the kid across the block did something else entirely. How do we even know if all these How do we even know if all these kids are showing the same level of proficiency? But of course, if you go with a completely standardized bank of proficiency measures, then you've got the issues of standardization. And then, once you've decided on what the task is, next you have to decide how good is good enough? How well does the student have to do in order to show proficiency? And one of the things that we tend to dance around with when we talk about competency-based education, and one of the things that represents a big shift when it's implemented, is that we're essentially talking about a pass/fail system. The student is either proficient, or they're not. And setting, and that means that setting the proficiency level becomes really tricky, because if we set it too low, then our high-functioning students are going to be really bored, and they're going to polish it off in a day. Some of you, I know, are of a certain age and like me, can remember the wonderful SRA box in your elementary school. And for some people, the SRA box was a challenge, and if you were like me, your goal was to blow through that box as quickly as you could. Get me to purple, baby. I'm going to get there. If things are too simple, your students get bored. But if things are set too high, now you've got a problem with students who are having difficulty clearing the level of proficiency that you're demanding of them. This is probably one of the reasons that the state of Maine kept backing away from making their, Maine adopted CBE, but they adopted it as a state. They attempted to implement proficiency-based learning. They called it PBL up there. And they kept backing away from making their diplomas based on proficiency-based learning, because every time they started to look at it, someone would pop up and say, "Do you have any idea how many students are going to not graduate from high school if you do this?" They'd go, "Oh, well, let's study this for a little longer." If you set your levels too high, then you're going to have a bunch of students who aren't going to be able to clear the bar. This is why, all the way back to mastery learning, part of the rhetoric of this approach has been, "All students can learn everything eventually." Because if we pretend, because if we admit, or we say, that all students can't learn everything eventually, then we have to admit that a competency-based education program is going to drastically fail those students. So we go with, "Everybody can learn everything." And of course, on the high school level, I always find that kind of disrespectful of the students, because my students could generally learn everything, but many of them didn't choose to. And I often open my year with this talk. I'm not suggesting those students were lazy, or that they were somehow deficient. As adults, we make that choice all the time. What I would say to my students is, "I could probably learn conversational Chinese. If I dropped everything else that I do in the course of a day and just studied nothing but conversational Chinese for several years, I could probably learn it." But I choose not to, because I don't see any utility in it, I don't see any cost-benefit to me and the amount of time and effort it would take for me to do that. And nobody labels me learning disabled, or a difficult problem student, or calls me lazy. As an adult, I'm allowed to make those kinds of choices. As a teacher, I feel we perhaps do not allow students that leeway. I'm not saying allow students to just blow off your class and fail it. I am saying, recognize that students are, they have agency, they have a choice. And sometimes, they will look at the utility of busting a gut for your class and say, "I don't see the utility here." Our job as teachers is to convince them, control them, push them. But this was another thing I always said as a teacher, you can't make students do When they're little, we con them into thinking we can make them to do stuff. By the time they hit high school, they know better. So saying that all students can learn everything, it's a nice safety on a CBE system, but it's not necessarily accurate or true. Setting proficiency level also points to our time management problem. If Chris has checked off all the proficiencies on Chris's list, can Chris go home now? What are you going to do with Chris for the rest of the year? Start next year? When Chris is 14 years old and they finished all their proficiencies for high school, are you prepared to hand Chris a diploma and send Chris on his or her way? And on the other end of the scale, if Pat is 21 years old, and Pat still hasn't finished all of the proficiencies on your list, you just send Pat on his or her way. Competency-based education, like mastery learning, like outcome-based education, gives us real new challenges with time management. Depending on how you set up the system, that can come down to the day. And this is where it becomes a practical issue in some communities with parents. Are you going to tell parents, "Okay, you're going to send your kid to school at 8:00 this morning. They'll be home sometime between noon and 4:00. Whenever they finish their checklist for today, we'll send them home." Sometime between noon and 4:00. Parents are not always enthusiastic about operating that way. The other thing that has turned out to be a big sticking point, I'm not prepared to argue whether this is a legitimate sticking point or not, what I can tell you is it is a sticking point. Because your system is essentially pass/fail, what we keep seeing in a lot of places that implement this, we saw this a ton in Maine, is parents get, parents of high-performing kids get upset quickly. Because if my child's report card just says proficient or not proficient, if my child's report card is a list of proficiencies, even if I've used some of the standards-based grading, like the decaying grade or that sort of thing, suddenly, my outstanding kid, who used to be pulling the 99s and 100s and was in the running for valedictorian and was getting praised all the time for having super-duper report cards, suddenly, my kid's report card doesn't really look any better than anybody else's. We can have a long discussion about whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, but the parents of those kids are pretty sure it's a bad thing. They're also concerned, and this is a part of CBE that's often not addressed when it's implemented, about what this means for that kid getting into college. If my kid is applying to college and his transcript is just 10 pages of twos and threes and fours, what does Harvard say when it looks at that? That problem of pass/fail, again, gets to some other issues. I used to say, "There's a question you never ask as a teacher." Students find dozens of ways to ask it, and those of you who've taught no versions of this question. Exactly how many sentences do we have to have in a paragraph? How many pages does this have to be? Do I have to turn this in in class, or do I have till the end of the day? It's dozens of questions, and they're all versions of the same question. And that question is, "What's the absolute minimum I have to do to get by on this assignment?" And unfortunately, CBE, by its very nature, answers that question that you should never What I always told my students was, "You're supposed to amaze me. Amaze me." Doing the bare minimum is not amazing. If you're in a relationship with somebody, if you just started dating somebody and they turn to you and say, "What's the absolute minimum I have to do to keep this relationship going?" Your first thought to yourself is, "Oh, boy, here's a keeper." Absolute minimum is nobody's idea of amazing, but absolute minimum is what CBE is set up to be organized around. What's the absolute minimum we will accept from these students before we say, "You're a graduate of our system. You can move on to the next step." And that, in my opinion, is not a good thing to organize an education system around. There are other problems with several setting levels, but I would argue that one is that proficiency is not binary like a light switch. As a writer, as a musician, an athlete, an historian, you always grow and develop. There's never a point, if you think about your own professional development, your own professional career, your own professional life, you never reach a point where you can say, "Okay, I've got it. I've flipped the switch. I am now proficient. I'm now master of this part of my work. I don't need to ever work on it ever again." Mastery really is not, and again, I'm arguing my opinion now, mastery is not a location, it's a journey. And by saying that we've reached the level of mastery, we're denying that journey. CBE, to me, is antithetical to the idea of developing lifelong learners. Because instead of saying, as good teachers do now, "Okay, you've done that. Come on, let's keep going. Let's keep going. Let's keep climbing the mountain. Come a little further." It says, "Okay, you flipped the switch. You're done with that. Let's move on to the next thing. Mastered that." One last issue with setting proficiencies. You get in real trouble when it's time to set standards for social and emotional learning. And this is one of the things that killed outcome-based education in Pennsylvania back in the 90s. At least in Pennsylvania, outcome-based education included outcomes for students' social and emotional qualities. We all know that these social, emotional qualities, what we used to call soft skills, are really important for a student's future, but as soon as we start saying, "The school's going to grade your student on how good a person they are," parents, for some reason, get upset. Go figure. It is imposing a set of values on students, and it was that exact feature in outcome-based education that raised up a whole bunch of parent outcry and resistance to OBE. All right. So switch to another question. Why is this reappearing now? Why, at this particular point in history, has this suddenly emerged again? Well, it almost requires an individualized approach to learning, which means teachers have to have a truckload of materials, they have to track a whole bunch of student progress, they have to keep a ton of data, there's a whole bunch of performance tasks needed, we have to track where each student is. There's so much data to track and so many materials to keep track of, that it cries out for technology. And what's brought CBE back around again is people saying, "Hey, look, we now have the tools. I think we can make it work this time." And if we look at the people who are advocating for competency-based education, we find people like the International Association for K-12 Online Learning, INACOL, and their organization, which is Competency Works. These are people who are heavily invested and longtime advocates of the use of computers and technology for education. CBE theoretically doesn't have to be about computerized learning. It certainly wasn't about computerized learning in the 90s or in the 60s. It doesn't have to be, but what we see right now everywhere we look is that it is. One of the most popular versions of CBE out there is Summit Learning, which was a program that was developed, company was backed by Mark Zuckerberg. Zuckerberg even lent them Facebook engineers to help them develop their program. They've given it out free, in much the same way that Facebook is free. And you know the saying about free products on the internet. If you're not paying for it, you're the product. But that product's in about 300 schools. Many have pushed back. Just last week, a bunch of students at Bronx High School walked out over Summit. Everywhere, we see people pushing back, we hear the same criticisms and the same complaints. It's easy to game the system. The students in the Bronx say, "You can sit right there, cut and paste the questions into Google, Google the answers, put the answers in, you're done." In a Summit-like system, teachers are facilitators. Your student goes to school, log on, they see their playlist, checklist of things to do today. They might see the teacher if they have a question or a problem. They might see the teacher if their computer has a problem. Promise is that they'll get 10 or 15 minutes, a 10 or 15-minute FaceTime session with the teacher per week. Teachers are referred to as facilitators. Teachers are not doing direct instruction, they're just there to facilitate and help things along. These groups, groups like Summit, the groups that are pushing these kinds of programs, are very sensitive to the presence of technology. They know that people don't get excited about plunking students down in front of screens, so they will generally downplay the technological element, but it's always there. They talk about mass customization, which is right up there with jumbo shrimp. It's two things that don't go together. Once we get the computers involved, there are other implications we have to deal with. These programs are meant, they're designed to track and analyze student performance. That's what they're there for, which means they're collecting tons of data about each student. Summit has already admitted that it shares data with at least 19 partners. Even if that intent to collect data is benign, even if the sharing with the partners is benign, every time that data is shared, it's opened up another possible front on which it can be compromised. And the use of technology shapes what we are able to include in the system. If I'm going to use a computer as the backbone of my competency-based education system, then my competencies, my tests, my proficiencies, my assessments, all have to be things that function within a computer environment. For English teachers, that's always a problem. We've been hearing for 20 years that some company has finally developed awesome software that will assess and grade student writing. They haven't. It still doesn't exist. But even if you're going to grade the student writing yourself, now you're going to have to create your assessment in some sort of form that can be entered as data into the program. Using the computer as a tool shapes what kind of data you can include and how you include it. I am not an anti-tech person. My tiny, little rural, small-town school was a one-to-one school 10 years ago, and I helped implement that. But anytime you bring technology into the classroom, you have to be aware of how the tool shapes what you can do and what you're going to do. Other things to be concerned about with CBE. There are a few other possibilities to watch out for. CBE lends itself real well to workforce training. And it is another way that if you're not careful, you can find that your school has stopped being a school to educate students and has become a school to prepare workers for a particular business concern. Businesses are only too happy to enlist schools to do their employee training for them. But unless they are offering every one of your graduates a job, that does not serve the student needs. I've had business people say, "Well, we need a bigger pool for widget manufacture. We would be happy if you would crank out 100 well-trained widgets students at the end of the year." To which you have to ask, "Well, are you going to employ 100 widgets makers?" No, they're going to employ 10. They want their choice of the 10 best widget makers out of the 100. But as a school, that's not really serving the 90 kids who didn't get a job. Now they've been trained to make widgets, and they're unemployed widget makers. You will also see language about how CBE allows learning to happen at any time and any place. And it's true, and this is kind of a slippery slope discussion, but it's worth paying attention to, this makes CBE a perfect setup for the unbundling of education. So that what some people envision, a future where you can get your certification, your little mini-credential, in anything from anywhere, meaning we don't need teachers and we don't need schools at all. meaning we don't need teachers and we don't need schools at all. Have your personal data record on the blockchain, and that stores all of your competencies that you collect from lots of different places. And we don't need schools. We don't need teachers. That also dovetails with vouchers or educational savings accounts. The idea there is that, as a state, I hand you an educational savings account, a debit card with money on it, and you just go shopping. Find one vendor that will sell you a math credential and another vendor that will sell you a literature credential. And again, no need for schools. Competency-based education, like personalized learning, doesn't exist anywhere in its idealized form. Can't afford it. Nobody can afford it. Nobody can really afford personalized learning. Nobody can really afford competency-based education in all its glory. So one of the questions you always have to ask, if you're a school district, a parent, a state considering it, is where are the compromises going to be made? Which corners are going to be cut? What things are going to be left out because they would make it too expensive? Will time really flex? Or will you hold on to 180 days, seven hours a day? Will students get individual work? Or will they all get the same work? And really, your personalization is just personalized pace, not personalized content. Competency-based education at its worst is really ineffective. Many of us have experienced it. If your workplace had you do one of those workplace trainings about sexual harassment or confidentiality or other policies and procedures, and you may remember the training, you pull up what is essentially an online PowerPoint presentation, and you let it play at your desk while you go do other things, and then at the end, it gets to this little five-or-10-question multiple-choice quiz, which you can take as many times as you need to. So you make your best guess based on common sense on what the answers are. And if you don't get them right, then you just keep doing it until you get them right. That's competency-based education at its absolute worst, where all of the wrong compromises have been made. Where students and families have rebelled, Bronx to Connecticut to Maine to Tecumseh, we hear the same complaints. I have to sit at a computer all day and teach myself. Teachers become facilitators instead of teaching. And it becomes really difficult to tell how well students are actually doing and what they're actually learning. CBE advocates admit that it involves a radical culture change in district. And that's why in many districts, they've run into trouble because rather than try to build it from the bottom up, they've either imposed it or tried to sneak it in from the top down. Districts become involved because some advocacy group threw a bunch of money at them. Because there are plenty of groups out there who stand to profit hugely from competency-based education if it's implemented their way. And they are willing to put their money where their mouth is. Because for them, it's an investment. And the lack of a well-articulated argument for implementing CBE comes back to one important fact. Mastery learning, outcome-based education, competency-based education has never been proven to actually work. We've been fiddling around with this stuff for 50 years, and there are elements of it that we have all incorporated. Everybody who's ever filled out a lesson plan that started with TESWABAT, the student will be able to. That is an artifact of mastery learning and outcome-based education. There are pieces of these programs in what we do now. But the whole thing, the whole picture, the whole conversion, it's never been proven to actually work. Maine spent a ton of money on this. And just six years in, they backed away from the whole concept. Advocates of this are still looking for a state or district to serve as a proof of concept. They don't have one yet. And that lack of proof, that lack of evidence, is probably one of the weakest parts of competency-based education. It has a foundation in something that makes sense. And certainly, there is no value in letting a student sit in a seat for 180 days like a potted plant and then handing them credentials at the end of 180 days because they did a good potted plant imitation. But creating that kind of accountability and holding students accountable for actually learning something doesn't necessarily require us to change our entire approach to how a school system works.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Green. Now we'll also have two comments or questions from the board. Tom, Pam.
Well, I would just say, Peter, thank you for coming. I, some of us invited you and I contacted you. And I really appreciate, I mean, any number, any one of the 20 items that you mentioned to me are a good reason to reject it, really. I mean, I don't, you know, I hear that we just got to do it the right way. Or actually, with the Marshall Plan, we're going to see what districts come up with. But I think you, this video will be played over and over again because the number of things that you showed that are real serious issues, I don't think they're, some of them can't be overcome. I mean, just, well, I could go through a lot of them. But I just appreciate you coming here. I don't really particularly have any questions. Just really, this is a, it's really an eye-opening for me. Thank you.
Pam, and then Dr. Z.
So thank you all, thank you for coming. And thank you to the board members for having our guests to come and speak to us. And so this has been a crash course for us as we looked at the Marshall Plan. And some of the things that you brought up were concerns that have been brought up at this table. A few months ago, we voted down funding for the Marshall Plan, which contains implementation for a lot of these things. And as you stated towards the end, alluded to towards the end, we have school districts that get funding provided to them to implement some of these things that could very much be that final blow to some of these schools. Especially when I think about the urban schools and how, and what comes to mind for me is cyber schools. And in the area that I'm from, we've seen total failure for students, where students were getting diplomas and they shouldn't have received diplomas. All kinds of things that have happened where students were left to their own. They were there and they had to teach themselves, and they weren't getting all the necessary things that they needed. And like yourself, I'm not against innovation. As you were sitting there talking, I remember my family was one of the first families in the neighborhood to get an Apple computer. And before that, we had the Texas, I think it was the TI that we plugged into the TV. I couldn't age myself. But I remember the SRAs too. But so I, you know, not against innovation, but when it comes to taking away and competing with our educators and again, that dismantling of public schools. And I just thank you for bringing this up. And again, I thank my colleagues for bringing you to the table because I hope that we're able to revisit this issue as the board and what is our role in making sure that everyone is aware of what this can bring to these communities and making sure that it's not just the dollars that our districts have to go after, but they're really able to understand what this may mean to them in the end. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Z.
Well, thank you for coming out and sharing. Of course, we always appreciate someone who confirms some of our own prejudices. And I appreciate that. If you could respond to one comment and then, which is that my impression is that, like so many of our fads in education, a good idea is, a part is mistaken for the whole. And I think that's the source of some of our, I think this has a place in education somewhere. I'm not sure it's the whole, how we need to remake the whole system. So if you cared to respond to that thought, that would be appreciated. And the other, and then the question that I'd like you to maybe expound on is that tension between our desire that all students achieve a certain amount, a certain minimal amount of education and the, how do we encourage excellence? Because the one appeals to our sense of equity, but the other, excellence, I mean, that, we all benefit from someone who achieves excellence. And yet, not everyone can be excellent. How do we encourage excellence while, on the other hand, encouraging some vision of equity, on the other hand?
That's a big question. I think a lot of the encouraging of excellence comes down to what the teacher does in the classroom, supported by what the school has in place for programs. Do you have, do you have programs in place that allow a student to excel, to pursue things that they're interested in? And do you have teachers that have the magic formula of being able to push and encourage them to do that? You know, it's a different challenge at different levels. My wife is an elementary school teacher. She teaches fourth grade. Elementary teachers have a different challenge than high school teachers.
Yes.
At the elementary level, even at the middle school level, it's just a matter of taking that energy and directing it someplace. On the high school level, it's seeing if you can get them to wake up and get excited about something. And a lot of that comes down to what the teacher can bring into the classroom. And if that is supported by the district, whether the district itself has a culture of demanding excellence or whether good enough to get by is all they want. Find good teachers. Support them.
Go to Eileen.
So thank you for coming all the way up to Michigan. I think the reason that you were invited to come is because the, and I apologize, I don't usually sound this way. We've heard a lot of the positive sides of competency-based education, which I've tried to find a definition for, and I've been unsuccessful in really finding what exactly does that mean? And I think even among us, when we have conversations, it's clear that each of us come with a different idea of what this thing means. And it strikes me as it's kind of like that word, freedom. Everybody's for freedom, but then when you start asking people to define it, we all have a very different definition. So we heard a lot of the positives, but we really wanted to kind of hear what are, what is the other side of the equation? What is some of the other understandings of what competency-based education can be and what we need to be hesitant about? So I have kind of a two-part question for you. And my colleagues have heard me say this before, but I kind of ran my own experiment at one point because I work in higher education. And as you know, competency-based education made its debut, if you will, in the higher ed realm. And so I wanted to find out what this was. And so I contacted one of these higher education institutions. And we had a conversation about if I were to get a master's degree, another one, from your institution, what would that look like? And we talked about, you know, my ability to write a paragraph. And we talked about my ability to write a paper. And at no time in the conversation did we ever actually talk about content. And so my question becomes, what happens with content? With competency-based education? I mean, what is the importance that is played on actual content? Because you can write a paper, but it could be complete gibberish. Have you fulfilled your competency base or have you not? So that's the question, the first question. And then the second one is, I think when a lot of people hear competency-based education, they think about project-based education. And that really, you're taking the content that you've learned and you're putting it into a project. Are those the same thing? Or are they kind of two different things that are starting to look alike in your experience?
I'll do the second one first because it's easier. Project-based and competency-based are not the same thing. Project-based is often adopted as a solution to the, how do we show proficiencies? Project-based is often adopted as a solution to the, how do we show the proficiencies? But it doesn't, there's nothing about competency-based education that requires project-based education. And there's nothing about project-based that requires competency-based. They're two different things, but they can, they seem to fit well together in some people's minds. Although, I will say this, about the project-based, one of the problems that emerges in some places in Maine, and they've done a couple of studies of how things happen in Maine. One of the things they found was that in Maine, the more the school pursued project-based or proficiency-based learning, the less interaction there was between students. Which makes a certain amount of sense. Because if your students are all moving at their own pace, then it becomes harder to have all the students work on a project about this particular unit because they're not all in that particular unit. So with competency-based, competency-based can actually work against project-based learning because it makes it harder to do, if you're really doing CBE, it makes it harder to do group projects because it makes it harder to find a group of students who are all in the same place and need the same project. There's been a trend, and you can kind of point to Common Core as part of the start of it, towards the idea of skills as the function of education. As I said, you can look through the ELA standards and you'll find virtually nothing about content, about a list of works that students should read. And in fact, we've seen a move in English classrooms away from reading an entire book. Because to practice the skills you need for the PARC test or the SBA test or the whatever your state is doing test, you just need excerpts. You just need passages. I frequently said the last few years I taught, I could boost test scores in my classroom by throwing out my entire curriculum and just doing test prep out of the daily newspaper every day. This idea that skills is the focus has been big. I do see the pendulum starting to swing. Reading wars have kicked up again because two or three years without big wars about how to teach reading. And currently, what's coming back is the understanding that how well a student can read, what reading skills they have, depends on what they know. If they don't know anything, they can't read anything. So the idea of a knowledge base is coming back. But we've definitely been pushing skills, 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 for a long time. And competency-based certainly lends itself to that skills approach. To get content in, you essentially have to define content as a skill. Same way that those of us who write lesson plans have learned to do it. You don't say the student will know about Huck Finn. You say the student will be able to answer questions about Huck Finn. The student will be able to write a convincing essay about Huck Finn that is mostly accurate. But yes, you've got to, you've got to work at it to get the content, the knowledge back in there.
Eileen?
I want to know where your 17-month-old kids are.
They're at home.
They're at home. Well, thank you so much for coming because I've read your writing over the years. And I'm familiar with, I think I'm familiar with, you retired when?
June.
June, yeah. So I'm familiar with, to some degree, the fact that your students really like you. That's on the internet. I know that the school in which you taught had about 300 children. It was about 92% white. I couldn't tell whether it was economically stable, the community?
We're, we're a small-town slash rural district. We have about nine through 12. We've now redefined as a seven-through-12 school. And as a seven-through-12 school, we have about 800 students. Nine-through-12, we had about 600. We're predominantly white. We have lots of poverty, but it's rural-flavored poverty, not urban poverty, which comes with its own set of issues. We're a large district, so a lot of our money goes into transportation.
We have many of the same issues here with a lot of our districts. Our solutions are Pennsylvania's problems and your community's problems are in many ways similar to Michigan. It sounds as if we are substantially further along in project-based learning schools. And also, project-based learning-
And also, project-based learning going on around, as a measure. I just wanted to give you, because I know you're a researcher and a writer with a national impact, just wanted to mention a few things that I know about Michigan that may want to be. One of the things that you talked about, and all of the points that you brought up, are concerns that we all have about every classroom, every child, every teacher, every school, every school district. It's a question of whether or not teachers want to, and schools want to, move into a different direction, and whether they can make a work for them. I know that you were, that you're concerned about CBL, or Mastery Learning, or whatever you want to call it. You talked about you can't afford personal learning from a cost perspective. And yet, we had Go Open here, hashtag Go Open, just before you did. I don't know if you heard their presentation. But that's all about individualized learning in either, in any setting. Being able to customize resources for students and having the abilities as a teacher to understand the needs of the student, to tailor instruction on the role of Florida.
I also wanted to say that there's a history here of schools that are project-based learning and Mastery Learning that have succeeded, and it may not be that way in Pennsylvania. From the sounds of it, I wasn't sure. And I think that it's totally true to say that it's never been proven to go to scale, that you can't replicate it statewide. So, it becomes a very district-driven or school-driven choice. And that program is what we're working on right now, the Marshall Plan. I think the other thing I wanted to say to you too, just for your own information, I chaired the White House Presidential Scholars Commission. And I was surprised myself to take a look at the applications and discover that there are a fair number of these schools nationally. And that the pass/fail system, without valuetarian and soliditarian, is honored by parents, and it's working. I'm not going to say that it would work in a whole state. And, you know, these schools are places, in many cases, where there is school choice. So, I'm sure there are parents who don't want that. And in Michigan, because we have school choice, we're able, parents are able to make that decision to some degree. And the last thing that I wanted to point out is that Michigan has a couple of statistics that Pennsylvania doesn't share. First, our children with IEPs drop out at a 29% rate. That's compared to 18% nationally. We're looking at that, but it's pretty significant. We're the only state that's in that category right now, or Palau, the Marshall Islands, in Washington DC. Another thing that we have going against us is that our middle-class and above, 4th grade, white and African-American boys score 49th on the NAEP, on the nation's report card, in reading. So, we're looking at innovative solutions, and we're trying to work with teachers in the classroom. That's what hashtag Go Open is all about. We're trying to come up with new ways that districts feel they will invest in. I think the thing that I appreciate more than anything else you said, is the teacher intensity, teacher support. In your writing, you talk about that for this, for competency-based learning. Is that if you don't make the investment in teachers, and make sure that they're competent to be able to convey their subject matter, whether they're teaching a traditional classroom, a project-based learning environment, or a competency-based learning environment, it's not fair to children, and it's not fair to teachers. And that's the comment that I would make, that I most align with you.
Thank you, Eileen, and then on to Michelle.
Thank you so much for being here. I appreciate your time, and really appreciate your thoughts, and particularly about how it affects, you know, the CBE affects curriculum, and about some of the responses from the families and the communities, which I don't think we took a look at before, or anyone took a look at. Matter of fact, we, this big bill, I'm not sure if you're aware, but it's, you know, something like $63 million budget.
Total is $100 million.
Somewhere around $100 million. Attached to the budget to support and promote competition amongst districts to implement a CBE program. And it was done in our state with very little debate, because it went through the budget process. So, there wasn't a really clear vetting or opportunity to really look at all sides. So, we really appreciate you being here to be able to help fill that space that was empty. I also think it's important, you know, you mentioned about the profit motive, and it's something that I'm very concerned about. I live in Detroit, and we had something called the EAA. And it was the anytime, anyplace, everybody gets a computer, which half of them didn't work. The platform, there was money to be made on promoting whatever platform they were using. I'm not a techie person, so I'm maybe awkward in how I'm phrasing these things, but there is just a lot of money. And then, you know, Michigan is the state where we have more for-profit charters than any other. I think we have 24% of all the for-profits are in our state. So, the, and we do, we have very lax regulation oversight over these for-profit entities, including our K-12, the online, where we have more, my understanding is we have more people dropping out than we do graduating. And yet, they get the same amount of appropriations as brick and mortar. So, this is also part of our environment that has created plummeting scores on our tests. And I, so I, well, I, so I don't know if you can speak any further to issues around profit motive that have surfaced in other places, or what, if there are ways, I mean, because the budget's passed, the money's there. We turned it down, but it's there, it's moving forward. So, my concern is the oversight to ensure that people aren't making, are taking our taxpayer money, and providing us with a inferior product that's going to make things worse, not better. So, are there safeguards, given that we have to live with this right now, that we should be considering as a board and as a state?
Letting market forces into education is its own topic. And I know that Michigan is heavy on for-profit charters, although I would say that, in my experience, the majority of nonprofit charters are just for-profit charters with clever accounting You have to, I mean, you have to be aware, once you let the market forces in, that for someone who's making money by providing educated and flavored businesses, their interests always run counter to the interests of your students. Every cent they don't spend on your students is a cent they get to keep. So, you have to be really clear on what you absolutely require of them, and then hold them to that. And that's a challenge everywhere.
Just real quick, I know we're out of time, basically. As far as, you know, it doesn't always happen, but replacing teachers with computers, I mean, you said in the worst case, it is completely replaced almost. But I mean, the idea that they become more facilitators, I hear that quite a bit. I mean, can you speak to how that, you know, they're going to say, no, we're not going to allow that to happen, but does it naturally evolve that direction?
It depends on how much of, how much control in the building you have over what comes through the system. For instance, the presentation I saw before mine is a good example of taking some of your control locally, and developing your own materials, and developing your own rules for how those materials are going to be used. The more you depend on a company to provide you with the product you're going to use, the less involved you're going to be in how that product is used. They say, look, we've got your education in a box, this will make your students' English scores go up 20%. Just write us a check and download this material, and everything will be awesome. You're going to have facilitators. When you develop the program yourself, then you have the chance to say, that's not how we're going to do it. But there is a tendency, as more and more of the education is delivered through the computer, that downplays the role of the teacher. Now, this is almost always oversold. Thomas Edison predicted that movies would make schools and teachers obsolete. He was incorrect. But for a while, people were willing to give it a shot. There's always a tendency to move in that direction, but it's generally resisted, and it hasn't worked. Rocketship Academy was going to be an entire charter chain based on plunking students in front of a computer, and you wouldn't even need teachers or facilitators. And it didn't work. You mentioned cyber schools. Pennsylvania is the Disneyland of cyber schools. We let them grow like weeds. And every teacher who works in Pennsylvania can tell you the same story. This child went to cyber school for a year, came back for a year, they would have been better off spending the year playing PlayStation. But yet, they'll let them go. The more you hand over to the computer, the less teaching your teachers are going to do.
Okay, we have one final comment from Nikki, and then we'll wrap up.
Let me make this quick. You said a few things that piqued my interest when you said, how does this impact access to education based on level of proficiency if you can't move on? I think that's a legitimate thing to consider, because then some kids don't have full access right to the information, even if they're not going to absorb it. So, I think that's something that would be something to consider. Transcripts and access to college, we've kind of talked about that at this table, and social-emotional learning. The other thing I do want to challenge us a little bit is the pass/fail concept, just because there are careers where pass/fail is very much baked into success. Like nursing is very much that way, but there's a theory component, there's a skills-based component, and pass/fail of a skill, for example, in learning how to make a, you know, do a bed bath, is very much skill-based. And I hadn't realized how much, you know, competency in skills was something that was already baked into something I had done since I was in 9th grade. So, you know, and I don't know that that's, not that pass/fail is the whole kit and caboodle, but you don't necessarily apply percentages to, you get 90% because you got half of the bed bath, no, you need to be able to do the full thing. So, in having taught nursing school for a number of years, that was something that there was a percentage-based grade, and then there was a pass/fail portion on skills. So, I think that's not necessarily something to rule out. And they get two or three chances, but anyhow, I think that's something that can be worked through. And there's sort of a heart-level thing going on with pass/fail, because I think some students need to be able to learn from failure, or we all need to be able to learn from failure. So, if you were to fail, it's not necessarily a negative thing, depending on how you view it. Anyhow, that was all I was thinking.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Green, thank you so much for being with us this morning. Thank you for sharing your thoughts and your ideas, and your opinions on competency-based learning. Thank you for reminding us of the challenges and the benefits of high-quality teaching, because teaching is a very complex art. And the better job we do teaching, the better student learning is. So, we thank you for sharing with us this morning. So, thank you for being here.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity.
All right, moving on to the next item on the Committee of the Whole Agenda, is the presentation of the Michigan Department of Education response to the state's determination. We have a title for this work called "A Path Forward." The U.S. Department of Education issued its determination regarding Section 616 of the Individual with Disabilities Education Act, otherwise known as IDEA. Michigan was the only state to be determined needs intervention. We can, we must, and we will do better for our children with disabilities and their families, both in the short term as well as the long term. Scott Kennascheck and Teri Chapman will lead us through the Michigan Department of Education's response to the state's determination with what is called "The Path Forward." Today is a presentation, only does not require any board action. So, both Scott and Teri, thank you for being with us this morning.
Great, thank you, Sheila. And thank you to the board for allowing us some time to develop a shared understanding about the state that we're current in, currently in, and the path forward. As interim superintendent Alice said, I'm joined by Teri Chapman. Teri is Director of the Office of Special Ed here at the MDE, as well as Jerry Cullen. Jerry is an analyst with the department as well, in the Office of Special Ed, and he did a lot of work on some of the predictive factors that we're going to talk about this morning. So, thank you to both of them for joining us. So, this particular issue was the first job for me when I arrived here, actually. It was, started in late June before I arrived here. Sheila and I were corresponding via text after she was notified by the federal government of the status. And we corresponded about the work that needed to be done. I have a great passion for special education, I've shared with, I think, most of you, been involved in that for a long time, serve on the Lieutenant Governor's Task Force with both Eileen and Michelle, and we've done a lot of work around special ed. I always share as well, disclaimer, for me, this is a personal issue. I have a son with autism. Cooper is 13, soon to be 14, in the 8th grade. And so, he, along with the other 200,000 or so students with IEPs, are really at the center of this work. So, the purpose of today is really to develop a shared understanding with you as the state board, again, of where we're at, what the data says, and then what our plan forward is. So, we have a presentation developed. We've given this presentation to about five or six other entities. I've done it for MESA, which is the Association of Special Administrators, MAISA, which is the ISD Superintendents Cabinet internally here at the department, the Council of Academic Leaders in Southeast Michigan, the Ad Alliance, and soon, the MAS, which is the Local Superintendent Association. So, we've been making this presentation throughout the fall, and certainly wanted to share it with you. The presentation doesn't really lend itself well to a PowerPoint, so we have a document in front of you that I'll kind of be drawing you to as we have our conversation this morning. The document has page numbers on the bottom right. Again, I'll call you back as we're going to flip kind of to and fro through the document. So, we do have a PowerPoint, but we'll do most of our discussion from the document. So, let's go ahead and get started. So, if you, we're open to the very first piece of the document, where it says "Scope of the Problem," which is page 5 on the bottom right. We know that Michigan was the only state to receive the status of needs intervention by the federal government with regard to our IDEA Part B performance. The federal government issues these determinations every year. Since 2014, they've been issuing them not only on the compliance side of things, but also on the results side of things. Prior to that, the determinations were issued on compliance only. So, in 2014, they went to this 50% compliance, 50% results, and we're going to work through some of those numbers. I've been looking at this data for a number of years now. One of the pieces on the Lieutenant Governor's Task Force that I was involved with was a study on special ed funding. And so, what we actually did is spent time looking at the determinations for all 50 states since 2014, and we identified which ones met the requirements, and then we looked at their funding systems to see if there was a correlation between their positive results and how they were funding special ed. So, familiar with this, familiar with this issue. So, we know what the issue before us is. On that page 5, you can see the states that are meeting requirements, you can see the status quadrants, I guess you could say, of meeting requirements, needing assistance for one year, needing assistance for two or more, needing intervention. You can see where Michigan falls there, and then needing intervention for more than one year. So, if you flip to the page 6, so let's take a look at the data. So, if you work through and go to page 11, bottom right, you'll see page 11, these are the numbers. I'll start at the top and just kind of work down. So, Michigan scored a 59.17. So, I'm on the top left of page 11. Michigan scored a 59.17 with regard to our needs intervention status. So, top left, you'll see 59.17, and then the needing intervention. If you start to work down, you can start to see the details of that. I'll be back up to 59.17. The cutoff for needing assistance is 60. So, we were close to needing assistance, that doesn't bring me a lot of solace, because we really want to be in that needs requirement phase. But the cutoff was 60. So, below that, you'll see two rows, results and compliance. You can see on the results side, there are 24 points available. We scored an 8 as a state on the results, which is a 33%. Below that, compliance, there are 20 points possible. We scored a 17, which is 85%. Simple math, 85 and 33 divided by 2 is 59.17. So, you can see how we landed on that particular score. In terms of what were we scored upon, that's as we move down the page. So, the first- So the first block there are a set of six scores revolving around reading. And so the federal government looks at, and we'll go through box by box, percentage of the fourth-grade children with disabilities participating in regular statewide assessments. So the score is not given on the performance of students on M-Step, but how many participate. And if you look to the right, we had 80% of our students participate in fourth-grade M-Step, so we scored a 1. If you flip further back into the packet to page 21, bottom right, you'll see the page numbers. On page 21 is the rubric. So if you're interested, what's a 0, a 1, or a 2, you can just refer back to that rubric as we go through that. I won't go back and forth to it on every one of these data points, but there's a rubric included in terms of where we would have to achieve to score a 0, a 1, or a 2. That rubric is on 21. So the next indicator in reading is percentage of eighth graders participating in statewide assessments. We received a 79, which we received no points. The next four boxes are all regarding NAEP, and we do start to look at performance on NAEP. So we received a 22 with the percentage of fourth-grade children with disabilities scoring basic or above on the NAEP. We did not receive any points. The next box, percentage of fourth-grade children participating in NAEP. So again, for NAEP, they look at participation and score. We received a 1. Eighth grade, again, this is reading, scoring basic or above on NAEP, a 34, scored us a 1. Participating in NAEP, 84, scored us a 1. So on the reading elements, you can see we scored four in that box. The box below is really second verse same as the first, except it's math. So I won't go through each one of those, but it's the same indicators, but they're just looking at math. M-Step participation, you can see for fourth and eighth graders, you see NAEP scoring, NAEP participation, both for fourth graders and eighth graders. Again, the rubric is on page 21. So that is the math information. The final box is a box, one of the data points that Eileen referred to earlier, is percentage of students dropping out and percentage of students graduating, and those numbers are abysmal. Students dropping out with disabilities, we are at 29%. Students graduating, we are at 63%. And we receive zeros in both of those categories. So if you...
Good question for you.
Sure.
With the percentage of fourth-grade NAEP and eighth-grade NAEP scoring basic or above, it's 22 to 34, so there's improvement there?
No.
I would have expected it to go...
Different groups of kids. So fourth grade per scoring basic on the NAEP is a 22.
Right.
It's a whole separate set of kids when you look at eighth grade that's got the 34.
Okay, it's not those fourth graders?
Yeah, it's not growth. Great question. So these, if you add up the scores on that, you will see eight points, and that is the eight out of 24 on the results side. So questions on the results side? All right, if you go to the next page, if you just flip over, I'm on page 12. We're on the compliance side. So again, a possible score of 20 points here on the compliance side. I won't go through these in detail. They're all based upon indicators, yes.
Yeah, so if they get a, they don't get a diploma, if they get a certificate of completion, I believe they're not counted at all, correct? So they're not even in the percentage?
Well, they're in the percentage, but they're in the percentage of not graduating.
So they would be considered a dropout?
They're not considered a dropout, but they're considered not graduating.
So dropout is really a group of kids who are in a six-year cohort. So from the time they start in ninth grade, the percentage of kids with IEPs who graduate within six years is what our score is reflected on. So 63% of kids, when you look at them over six years, graduate with a diploma. Dropout actually has more to do with kids who leave special education, doesn't necessarily mean they dropped out of school. They may or may not be in special education, and they're counted as a lever, not necessarily dropout the way we think that they've left the school system.
But, so is that, could potentially be a positive then?
They're in regular, they go to general ed from special ed?
They, no. Because if you leave, it's because we don't know, we have lost track somehow of, maybe you moved to a different district and didn't tell the district you were a student with a disability, so you were enrolled, and they had no accounting of the fact that you were a student with a disability.
Oh, so it doesn't mean you've moved into general education?
Not necessarily. It may.
But it could?
It could. Right.
I could ask for one other quick clarification. When I was on the National Assessment and Governing Board, there was a statistic that I think it was about 7% of the U.S. school population probably can't do, from learning disabilities, emotionally impaired, other issues, probably can't do the high level of high school or K-12 work that's required to graduate. And that was not an ed statistic, it was a Health and Human Services statistic. And I wondered, because about 8% of our children are not included, this is the number that we're talking about, too, whether there's anything in that that relates to a statistic that...
So the federal law only allows, when you look at all kids who are to be assessed in your state system, we can only count 1% of students as not participating. Michigan is at 2.4% currently, so we are having to go through an improvement plan to reduce that number. So they look at both.
Yeah, that's different, right. That's different than whether or not kids can graduate.
The graduating piece, yeah. I'll go back and take a look at that and see if there's any kind of correlation between the 8% and the 7%. Good point.
Just one more thing with the 34 and 22, am I speaking out of turn?
Go ahead, Nikki, and then Cassandra.
34 and 22 with these two, I mean, I know they're different cohorts, but that means that kindergarten, first, second grade, third grade, I mean, something was very different with that cohort. 34 and 22 is a huge difference.
Well, did we look at the rubric?
So it's like, did NAEP change, did what changed there?
Grade did so much better than the fourth grade.
I guess, I guess we can't necessarily correlate them, because we don't know what that group did in fourth grade.
If you go to page 21, yeah, if you go to page 21, there are different cutoffs. And so percentage of fourth-grade students scoring basic or above on the NAEP, the minimal is 39. And if you go right below that, basic or above on the NAEP is 20, I believe, if I'm reading this correctly.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so they're really very different.
So the cutoffs are different as well.
Sandra?
Just a quick question. So NAEP is a random assignment test, right?
It is.
So how do you get, then, percentage of fourth-grade children with disabilities included in testing on the NAEP?
I'll address that.
Eileen?
So we have a NAEP coordinator, and at some point after I leave, you may want to have the coordinator come in and talk to you about how the NAEP samples are drawn. But the samples are totally calibrated to make sure that it's representative of all the demographics that are measured. So the, you know, they'll be going to schools, it's confidential what schools they're at. That's the one difficult part, along with not being able to track scores for children like we can, you know, parents can check on their child's M-Step score, which is not possible with the NAEP. But the reality is that the samples are across the country, calibrated, selected, everything that is done makes sure that the pool of kids who are being tested is representative of the general population in the state.
So who takes them out of the equation, then?
Who takes...
Why do we, 16% of them didn't take the test. Who made that decision?
It's a decision tree for the nation's report card that schools are supposed to follow, and certainly NAEP does, and there have been times when schools have said this child can't be tested, where NAEP has said they have to be for that school to be a part of the sample. And there are machinations that I'm not part of anymore.
There are opt-out provisions as well.
Okay. So we, so if someone opts their kid out, we get dinged for it, basically?
That's correct.
Right.
Can I, sorry. Okay. So I'm just wondering, so you say they're counted as not graduating if you lose, if we lose track of them, correct? Like if they go to a different district?
In some cases.
Some cases. So would that be, you know, I'm thinking in urban areas where there's a lot of back-and-forth with school of choice, would you be able to track those students if they were going in and out? Is it, would it have to be a private school or out-of-state school? Or is it the turn, if there's like a lot of turnover, would that impact the statistics on completion and dropout?
So that's a point-of-time data that we collect, and if a district doesn't have a process in place where the child that enrolls, if the parent doesn't tell the district, "My child has an IEP," and they just enroll the child, eventually the system will catch up with it through the unique individual code that assigns to a child, but that may or may not line up with when the data is pulled for the reporting purposes. At some point, we do, but at the point that this data is collected and reported, that's probably part, one of the variables.
Okay, we move on.
Questions on results?
Move on.
We'll continue on compliance. So on page 12, again, won't go in-depth on this, there are different indicators that the federal government takes a look at in terms of how the department is doing in our compliance role. Again, we scored 17 out of 20. Areas where we did not receive a 2, 1 has to do with the IP developed, implemented by the third birthday, we scored a 1. We scored a 1 on a transition indicator. We scored a 1 on what they call longstanding noncompliance. We have a couple of districts who are, were, are in longstanding noncompliance, and we are working very hard to get them out of that. So on the compliance side, scored a 17 out of 20.
Yes, Dr. Z.
Quick question. Secondary transition, is that the transition from elementary to secondary school, or, unpack that for me?
The federal law requires that by the time a child with an IEP turns 16, they need to have a transition plan, and there's a checklist of 10 different items that have to be addressed in the plan. And for the purposes of compliance, you have to get all 10 of those things done correctly, or it's a zero.
Okay.
So we have struggled in Michigan to make sure that those 10 items are all done correctly for all kids all the time.
That's transition to the workplace, then?
It's transitioning, it's a transition process to prepare kids for post-secondary.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then Pam?
I guess some of the other indicators, I would say 4B, 9, 10, how do we compare those to other districts and/or how do we, I don't see that in the, I don't see a rubric for that. Am I missing?
So those indicators are collected and reported on every year through the annual performance report, based on a state performance plan that's required under IDEA. And these indicators don't necessarily mean that districts haven't had the problem. What this really is a reflection of is, to whatever extent, were we as a state successful in getting those policies, procedures, or practices compliant within the established timeline? So it's not saying that districts don't have the problem, it's saying that those districts that were identified as being noncompliant corrected within the required timeframe of submitting the corrective action. We successfully got them into correction.
Okay, so then these scores of 2 over here mean that we're performing better than the 0 in the, is it the same scoring, 0, 1, 2?
That, those, that 2 means we get the most possible points because we were able to identify districts' direct corrective action and then close out corrective action within a year. That's actually a different part of the metrics, I think it's on a different page. That's on page 16, the rubric for those indicators on page 16.
So how we're performing in these areas is not a part of...
That's correct.
Okay.
This is about whether or not the state was able to get the districts into compliance within a timeline.
Okay.
So questions on results or compliance, or where the state is at? Nikki, no? All right, I'm between you and lunch. So the next piece, then, is let's take a look at the longitudinal data involved. So I'll go to page 25, which is in the section, again, behind longitudinal data. And you will see, what we've tried to do is take a look at where Michigan has been from 2015, if you look to the far right and work back to 2018. Page 25 is the reading elements. Page 26 is the math elements. Page 27 is the exiting data elements. And if you go to 28 and 29, you can see the compliance indicators. And 29 is really where, if you can scroll to, 29 shows you the bottom line in terms of Michigan's determination since 2015. So I'm on page 29, starting at the far right. We were in the needs assistance category with a 64.58%. In 16, that decreased to 63%. 17, we were flirting with needs intervention, and 18, determined to need intervention. So you can see this has been a long time coming. And then below that, you can see where the points have been laid out in terms of the results and the compliance scores longitudinally. So I wanted to make sure you had that set of data as well, looking at it from a longitudinal point of view. Questions on that? So what we also looked at, if you can go to page 33, is some of our neighbors. We went and took a look at other Great Lake states who are within driving distance. These places you can drive to, and it doesn't take long to get there. And they are all meeting the requirements regarding the Part B determinations. And so we pulled together, again, the set of data with reading, that's on page 33, and we looked at Minnesota, Indiana, Wisconsin, and Ohio. Those are all Great Lake states that are meeting the requirements. And the scores are all there. We're not going to go through all of the scores, but we wanted to give you the opportunity to see where they were at. Page 34 is the math elements. 35 is the dropout and graduation elements. And 36 is the compliance elements. And I'll take you to the bottom line again, page 37. Page 37, you can see Michigan on the top left, received a score of 59.17. We know that's needs intervention. And then you can see where the other states were at this year. Minnesota, 89.5. Indiana, 90.83. Wisconsin, 91, and Ohio, 83. Below that, you can see the actual breakdown of their scores in terms of the results in compliance. So we wanted to take a look at other Great Lake states that were meeting requirements, because they are, and they're not that far away. We wanted to provide that data to you as well. Questions on that data? I know it's a lot of information. All right, so if you could go back now to page 6, we'll take you back earlier in the document.
You know, I'm just trying to still absorb these huge differences with the other states here. And I'm just, I'm just trying to, what's unique about Michigan that has, you know, I guess it's our results that are holding, really weighing us down, it seems. You know, at some point, I mean, I would like to know what your thoughts are as to why our results are down the way they are. I mean, I have my own theory, but I would like to know why you think we're so much out of whack with these other states.
That's a great segue, Michelle, to where we're heading, because that is really one of the big questions. Not only why, but why not? And then challenges and barriers, and what do we have control over, what we don't. So that's a good segue. So on page 6, if you look at the bottom left, we started to talk about the path forward. Again, this was one of the first conversations Sheila and I had had about what's this path forward going to look like. And so from my perspective, as we take a look at this, I really see this as an opportunity to improve. We have to improve, we must improve, we will improve. We know it's been a long time coming. We looked at that longitudinal data, and it's really a systemic issue to start the conversation that Michelle was alluding to. This conversation will have a lot of tentacles when we start talking about these performance indicators. It's going to, they're going to have, I believe, far-reaching consequences. The work will require adults to change their behavior and practices and stop assigning blame and working in isolation. And the end product that you're going to hear about here in the next few minutes is to really bring a large, diverse group together to develop ideas and implement solutions. And also, again, to Michelle's point, start asking that question, why? So the aim of this group is, on page 7, we want to be sure our efforts are aligned with top 10 and 10. That's a must with everything we do at the department. We want to look at the best practices of other states. What's going on in those other states, and how are they tackling these issues that are before us? We want to take a look at what the research says on teacher training, pedagogy, and inclusive practices. And we also want to take a deep look at what we're calling predictive factors for graduation and dropout rates. And I do want to spend some time, we have a slide on these predictive factors. I want you to walk through some of the predictive factors that we're looking at with Michigan data. This was actually born out of some research by a gentleman named George Batch at University of South Florida, and we looked at these predictive factors for all of our kids when I was at Engham ISD. So I asked Teri, and Jerry's with us, to pull these numbers together for our kids with disabilities in the state of Michigan, in terms of, can we, can we take a look at predictive factors in terms of suspensions, attendance, personal curriculum, and time spent in gen-ed? And so that's the information that's before you, and it's fairly simple to digest. If you look at the top, number there, 11,156, these are students, I believe, in an 11- If you look at the top, number there, 11,156, these are students, I believe, in an 11-12, I believe, that were freshmen in 11-12. And there were 11,156 that had zero suspensions. If you look at the dropout rate for that cohort of kids, it was only 5.9. Their four-year graduation rate was, well, this is a vision test, 62 percent. You can see how many percent enrolled in post-secondary, the average number of terms completed, and the average numbers of credits earned. So we're really digging down and analyzing the data. But take a look at, if a student is suspended one time during that freshman year, that's 1,294 kids, they're two times, almost three times more likely to drop out. Being suspended one time their freshman year as a student with a disability, they're almost three times more likely to drop out. You can see the graduation rate plummets, and so on and so forth. If you go down to four or more suspensions, and as a freshman, that's a cohort of 418 kids, their graduate, or their dropout rate was 24 percent. And so we started to look at those suspensions, not that we can't suspend students, but can we do things differently to keep them in school, to keep them in that classroom? Same, look at attendance. Students with over 95 percent attendance, as a freshman in 11-12, 7,946, dropout rate was only 4.83. You go down to that next quartile, which is actually pretty decent attendance, 90 to 94, their dropout rate almost doubles. And you can see the less they're in school, the higher the dropout rate. And again, you can go over with graduation rate, post-secondary, so on and so forth. So we're having conversations internally, and are going to have those conversations with the field. These are some pretty significant factors regarding kids with disabilities and using them in predictive nature. This is probably the one that jumps out the most at me, and again, thanks to Jerry and Terry for pulling these numbers together. We have something in Michigan called the personal curriculum. When it was first introduced, it was something that a teacher or a principal or counselor had to request. We, we worked to, to change that in 2014, and now a parent can request and a district shall provide a personal curriculum. But you can see of this particular cohort of kids, so the 788 that had a personal curriculum, their graduation rate was 88 percent. If those that didn't have a personal curriculum, 11,890, their graduation rate's 59 percent.
Scott, would you define personal curriculum?
Sure. A personal curriculum is something that you work with the school district on to basically personalize the curriculum for your child with a disability. It's meant to add flexibility and really be tapered to the student's abilities as they work through. Thank you, Sheila. Those personal curriculums are typically developed in the ninth grade year, it doesn't have to be the ninth grade, it can be later, but typically as a student enters ninth grade, as they look at that Michigan merit corps, how can we personalize that Michigan merit more curriculum to, to the student's needs? And so there's a tool out there, and pretty strong evidence that if that tool is used, it's more likely that the student's going to graduate. So the last set of data, and we could, we could talk, I could talk dad all afternoon with you as we analyze this, but this is the time spent in gen ed. And look what happens to the graduation rate with, with time spent in gen ed, as deemed appropriate by the IP, obviously. These are all IP decisions. But for this particular group of kids, I'll start with the second box, that we're in a gen ed setting for less than 40 percent of the day for the majority of the past six years. That, that was 944 of this set of kids, only 8 percent graduated. If that student moves into the gen ed setting just one box over, for 40 to 79 percent for fewer or half of the last six years, their graduation rate triples. If you move one more box over, and that student's in gen ed for 40 to 79 percent for a majority of the past six years, it doubles from 24 percent. So you can see the picture. So we wanted to share this information with you to let you know that we're really taking a deep, strong look at the data and what that tells us as we tackle, tackle these issues. So if we go back to page 7 and continue on the aim of the group, we want to completely correct longstanding noncompliance, we want to discover, embrace, and use transparent data to guide instruction and increase outcomes, as you just saw. We want to use early warning systems, which is a similar concept, again, to what you just saw. We want to use the state systemic improvement plan as needed. Vanessa and her team are leading an initiative, including all divisions, on what they're calling the MYKIP, the Michigan Integrated Continuous Improvement Process, which really braids needs requirements and takes a look at the whole child as opposed to the child in segments. We want to promote, use, and expand personal curriculums, you saw data regarding that. We want to talk about CTE, and we've engaged Brian Piles, who was here earlier today. We know that students who have access to CTE experiences graduated at a higher rate, general ed or special ed. So how can we take a look at CTE to, to help with this, including EDPs or educational development plans, mock interviews, so on and so forth? We're looking to examine and research possibly alternative or additional, I should say, graduation diploma options. In Michigan, there's one path to a diploma, and that's the Michigan merit corps. In other states, that's not the case. And so we are, are having conversations, and will be having conversations about that. We know that there's been a, a number of funding studies regarding special ed. I happen to chair one of them. We identified a shortfall of $692 million in the special ed funding system within the state. We know that there's another study from the School Finance Research Collaborative that looks at funding. We want to take a look at how we spend our transition money here at the department. We don't have a lot of discretionary funds, but we need to take a look at how we're spending our money here at the department from a discretionary point of view. We are certainly going to develop short and long-term goals. We would like to identify or implement a tiered intervention model for intermediate school districts. So what we're in the process of doing is, all of those indicators we just went over, we are looking at them by ISD. And so we'll be able to see where those ISDs are at in those categories, and then provide tiered interventions. So if one ISD is all twos, we know we can go to them possibly for ideas and best practices. If others are struggle, struggling on a certain aspect of that results side, then we can go to them and provide tiered intervention for them. So we're, we're narrowing that data down here shortly. Leverage federal dollars, a couple of things I think it's important to keep in mind, the data that's used in these determinations is always a year behind. So the data that's been collected for our 2019 intervention, when we get a letter in June of 19, that data's already been collected. And so there's little to nothing we can do about that. So what we're trying to do is get our arms around where we think we'll be next year already, even though we have no control over those numbers. The data for 2020, another thing to keep in mind, is we will be reporting that differently to the federal government. Right now, when we send our information to the feds, it's in the form of about 930 different files, because we do it by local district. Beginning in, beginning this year for 2020, we're going to be submitting that by ISD on aggregate. So we'll submit 56 data files as opposed to 930 data files. A couple of the things to tightly braid the work of the associations, and you'll see how we're going to, to do that, and then develop additional ideas and potential solutions outside these lists. These are things that, that I have experienced in that came to my mind, this is not an all-exhaustive list, there are a lot of bright, brilliant people out there with a lot of other great ideas, but wanted to share these with you to begin with. Group participants on page 8, we'll just cut right to page 41. So how we're going to move forward on page 41 is a little graphic. We have a broad group of stakeholders that's going to be coming together in early to mid-December. And that's larger steering committee is really going to take a look at this data and other data, develop a shared vision, and develop a theory of action over the course of a couple of months. That particular group, then, will identify three representatives to serve on their behalf to actually take a look at, and serve on one of four committees. M-step participation, NAEP participation in results, graduation rate and dropout rate. It's pretty simple, the four areas. So we'll have four working committees that will meet throughout the spring to develop a set of recommendations to, to move forward in terms of improving. That, those work groups, we'll get back to Michelle's earlier point, they'll really take a look at the why. Why are we getting these results? Why aren't we performing better? What challenges and barriers exist? Which ones can we control? Which ones can't we control? They'll also be looking at what are other states doing, and what should we capitalize on? And then again, in the end, what short and long-term actions does the state of Michigan need to take? On page 49, you can see who that steering committee is. I've reached out personally to all of these folks and asked them to serve on the steering committee. Again, on page 49, you can see who is going to oversee the work, certainly myself and Terry. I've reached out to two representatives, Representative Calley, who obviously is a Michigan House member, but is also a mom, Representative Liberati, Frank is from Downriver Detroit, certainly a representative, but he's also a dad. And I did that because as we have these conversations, if there are policy recommendations that are going to result in a change in state statute, I wanted to have folks at the table early for those conversations, so we know where we might be headed. Laura Chang is going to join us, we appreciate her willingness to help in this, looking forward to that. Bill Miller, Chris Weigent, Wendy is here, Wendy has graciously accepted the offer to help, too. Paul Leabannau, Dave Manson, Mark McWilliams from Michigan Protection and Advocacy will join us. The AFT will be represented by Jackie Gooseon. MEA is represented as well, Vanessa's going to represent her division, Dan Quisenberry, and then also representative from the Detroit Community School District. So this particular steering committee will meet a couple of times, really draft the shared vision, and then they will nominate three people to serve on these working committees that will begin to ask why, take a look at challenges and barriers, and come up with recommendations, with those recommendations coming in June of 2019. That is what I have, there's a timeline that kind of summarizes just what I shared with you from start to finish. And Superintendent Alice's pleasure, I can either ask questions, or we can adjourn and come back.
Okay, we have an option in front of us, we can continue on and ask questions, we can adjourn, break for lunch, come back after lunch and ask questions and comments.
Can you see how many people have questions?
All right. How many people have questions or comments?
Probably none.
Pam?
We've got a half hour.
Okay. In order to allow maybe some time for us to digest what we just heard?
It's a lot of information.
It's a lot of information, some time for us to digest it, we'll come back and respond to questions after public comment. And public comment will be at 1 o'clock, so that will give us 45 minutes, about 45 minutes for lunch.